Coming to the Radio Council Meeting, November 28th, 2016. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call shows everyone's present. Approval of the minutes, November 28th. Maggie?
Yes, I had several comments on the minutes. First, with respect to the minutes, when it says October 24th, the correction that was made there, I don't recall that the statement made by the Johnson-Rosati attorney was actually stated in the minutes. That was not part of the minutes. That was just a side comment that he made, but it was not actually part of the minutes on October 24th. Do I have concurrence on that? Jim?
I made a statement that he was just filling out
Yeah, but that
vacancy on the pine information.
Right, but that was not part of the actual meeting on October 24th. And the point I'm getting at is you can't add things to the minutes that weren't said at the time the meeting was held. This comment was not, did not come out of that meeting.
I believe he stated that he had sent an email in regards, and said what he had stated in the email.
And I, when you review the tape, I say I do not recall that being in the minutes at all, so. But you can go ahead and review the tape on that. Also on page four, it's paragraph number three, and I'm looking down, maybe about halfway. It says, "City manager Ladner stated we would. Council member Kurzweil stated she is not comfortable with this." With, you have "with" twice, so I would delete that second "with." On page six, at the very bottom of the large paragraph, it says, "Further discussion was held regarding the cross-access agreement." When you review the tape, I would like to put in what was said. Kurzweil stated she would have to disqualify herself from voting on anything that involves colonial acres. She stated again, quote, "I can't vote on anything with colonial acres." That was deleted. Let me add one more correction. This is on page 10. This is the last paragraph, and it says, "She further stated she assisted Dawn Bellinger." It's Dawn, it's Tawn, T-A-W-N, and it's Belliger, B-E-L-I-G-E-R, I believe. Thank you, that's all I have.
Anyone else? I move the minutes as amended.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Prove the bills.
It's a second meeting.
So there aren't none? Yeah, absolutely. Figured waiting. Rule of the agenda.
I have no additions or deletions.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to add to the agenda an item. Actually, I'd like to have it under new business. Number eight, a discussion regarding a conflict of interest as it relates to Councilman Glenn Kibble and Pullum Windows.
My second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't we need a supermajority on that?
No, because it's a discussion.
Because you're only amending. Okay. For the record, would that be item number eight under new business?
Yes, that was my intent.
And could you repeat that, please?
It's a discussion piece of
Discussion regarding a conflict of interest as it relates to Councilman Glenn Kibble and Pullum Windows.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything someone would like to speak about tonight that's not on the agenda? State your name.
Well, wait, I wouldn't get to approve the agenda.
You did. We did.
We did.
Did we?
Yeah.
Oh, I see the clarity thing screwed me up.
Good evening, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. Carl Richards, 390 Lennox. I just, everything, it's all good. That's a common phrase today, and I want to make sure we emphasize that. I want to first off say something about our DPWs, already very well-prepared for the ice and snow and the cold weather. Although we're thankful, we haven't had any just yet. Anyway, I want to move on to the next few topics real fast here. I'm totally caught off-guard and delighted that we have high school students here, because people have asked me from time to time, "Why don't you ever say anything about our sports teams?" Really, I'm so far out of the loop of education in the schools that it's not anything I really know about anymore, although I claimed it was a part of my life once upon a time. Our sports teams are all ambassadors for our community wherever they go. They are all ambassadors of goodwill, and they exhibit confidence and character, which they learn in their sports. And whether they win or whether they lose, they carry a sense of pride and confidence with them from our community. And for that, that's about all I'm qualified to really say about our sports teams. I wish them all the very best. Okay, moving on. Cool Yule is coming up this weekend, and we're all looking forward to it. Everybody hopes to have a good time, and I hope the weather cooperates with all of us. Next little item, the Christmas house is open for business on Lake Street. The store and the ground level, and the tours will be coming later. This is also known as the weatherhead house historically in the community. That is a subject of discussion. Councilman Dedakis's neighbors, and she's well familiar with them. Anyway, just letting you know, okay? Also of note, the South Lion City Council, and this is a first, as far as I know, made WDMI radio station over the past weekend. Maybe some of you heard it. I heard it once, and all I can say is I have never heard South Lion City Council Minutes mentioned on any radio station. We all know where WDMI is, okay? And also some council persons, some council members' comments were quoted in the announcer. All I can say is, I don't know who reported this, but I can tell you right now, it wasn't me. Somebody had to call that radio station and give them the council minutes, and I never heard it done before. Okay, and the last thing I want to mention real fast is, I think all of us here can remember a deadline that somebody gave to somebody for this November 29th. And yoho, woo-hoo, that's tomorrow, okay? And anything, any further details about that, I'll let somebody else handle in the other further comments. And I'm glad you're all here. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Anyone else? Discussion with the executive leadership of the GFL USA, formerly Rizzo Environmental. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. So it's just, we've met with the members of RASOC and Lynn and Mike previously, and we thought we'd just get out and address council regarding the purchase of Rizzo Environmental Services by GFL, a company I founded.
Can you identify yourself first, please?
It's Patrick DeVigie, CEO and founder of GFL. And we're just getting out to all the communities we service as part of the acquisition, and obviously, some of the media that's gone on over the past six weeks. And it's really just to get out in front of all the councils and answer any questions that they may or may not have. Just tell us a little bit about the company. I founded the company in 2007 in Canada, was really based in Toronto, and we've now expanded across Canada. We service approximately 2 million homes in Canada, and now about 550,000 homes in southeastern Michigan. We do curbside collection, recycling, waste transfer stations, landfills, you name it, so a whole host of communities across Canada. We've passed on a whole bunch of our references to the RASOC group, along with Mike, and I know he's done some diligence and reached out to a bunch of the communities that we service in Canada, as well as on the U.S. side. We closed the acquisition on September 30th of this past year, and then two weeks later, we're obviously hit with some unexpected news. I can tell you, we weren't aware of any of these actions that may or may not have took place. We read it about it the same way you found out about it, in the Detroit Free Press, which was a little bit troubling from our perspective. But, you know, we just jumped in, and I think the focus has been just on ensuring that the communities we service continue getting the same service at the same price, and focusing on just making the business better. I think from your perspective, the only major changes that you'll see are going to be the color of the trucks, drivers' uniforms, and website. So from our perspective, that's all you're going to see. You're going to continue seeing the same drivers, same supervisors, and a lot of the same sort of management that manage these contracts day-to-day. There was a few changes at the top that we've removed, obviously Chuck Rizzo from, you know, running the day-to-day operations of the business, and he's been, he resigned. He was either going to be terminated or resigned. We gave him the option. He chose to resign, and we've just sort of moved forward with the existing plan that we had, in providing you guys with the best service at the best price. So that's our focus. I don't think, you know, you, from, I mean, everything we've heard, service has continued running the exact same way it has in the past, and it's been almost sort of, you know, two and a half months now, and we don't expect that to change anytime soon.
Maggie?
I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask you, and also your corporate attorney that's here this evening.
Rick's actually here.
That'd be great, if he could step down, because I wanted to ask some questions. First of all, what I would like to address with you, and it's unfortunate that you've run into these issues with Rizzo, what are you doing as the CEO of a multimillion-dollar international corporation to stem the tide of public corruption, of this going on in your culture? I mean, you now have this culture that somewhere in the Rizzo culture, somebody thought it was appropriate to bribe individuals. So what are you, as the CEO, going to do? What policies are you instituting? Have you already instituted? What training are you putting people under? And a sub-question that I'd also like to ask is, could any of this bribery have been prompted by commissions for obtaining work, that employees felt that they had to get more contracts, therefore to hold on to their jobs? Was there a financial incentive here? What was going on in this culture that these bribes were going on? Or, if you can talk about it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we've done an extensive amount of due diligence before we purchased the business. Obviously, none of this was identified. I think from what we do going forward, I mean, I'm the largest individual shareholder, but my largest two shareholders are U.S. banks. One's JP Morgan, and another's McCoury Infrastructure Group, which is another bank out of New York. So we have strict foreign corruption policies, anti-bribery policies, et cetera, that every single one of our employees has to sign if they want to be an employee of GFL. And that starts right from the top to a driver in the field. So we've actually implemented that and made every single employee of the former Rizzo group sign off on that policy. I mean, in terms of, you know, sales, I think, I mean, the, from my perspective, the biggest victims in this whole thing are our employees. I mean, our employees are pretty happy, you know, working for the company that they work for, and for them to go home and be embarrassed by seeing the company that they work for plaster all over the papers is pretty embarrassing for them. I don't think the actions of one or two at the top of this business, you know, lead to a systematic sort of issue. At the end of the day, even on the contract where some of this is alleged, you know, Rizzo was, in our due diligence, almost eight to 10% lower in each one of those bids, and are providing a superior service. So we, you know, I still, there's some things that don't make a lot of sense to me and why certain things were done, but, you know, we have zero tolerance for this kind of behavior. It won't happen, and ultimately, at the end of the day, I'm responsible for what goes on day-to-day, and we don't behave that way, and we'll never behave that way. So every one of the employees has signed off on the policy now, so they understand clearly sort of where the lines are, but, you know, we, we've hired, obviously, forensic auditors to do a deep or die financial review. We've also hired forensic auditors to review, you know, even from just Chuck's emails, 300,000 emails on its own, so that process is well underway. So that's going to take another three to four weeks, and we're in process of doing that now. And through that, if anything comes of it, there'll be other people that'll be terminated or let go because of it, but, you know, from what we can see, it was only actions of one or two that sort of partook in all this.
With respect to the bidding process, I just want to touch on it very briefly. What is, how do you bid in Canada? Are you governed by statute in terms of how you can bid? How does that work in Canada?
I would say the bidding process is a little more, is a little more refined in Canada, truthfully.
That's fine.
It's than what you see here, the, even the RFP and RF, most of what happens in Canada is called an RFQ process, and it's an open bid. So the community actually says what service they want versus giving you sort of a menu of different things to pick from, which leads to a negotiation, which leads to other things happening. So when they issue a bid, it's, they say, "We want garbage picked up once a week, we want recycling picked up once a week, and we want yard waste in the summer, and we want this," and you bid on that, and it's a public bid opening. And they have qualification specifications, that if you meet this qualification, you automa, and the low bid automatically wins the bid. And it's an open bid process.
Is that required by statute that you have to take the lowest bid?
If you meet the qualifications, yes.
Must be taken, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I had a question now for Rick. Wanted to just thank you very much, Rick, for taking my phone calls. If you could explain, I went through how I, I sort of diagrammed the transaction, and what perked my interest was, I was trying to ascertain whether this was an asset purchase or whether this was a stock purchase. And if you could just explain, I think, I read our city attorney's letter on this, and it was very confusing. I just think, understanding stock purchases is not an easy thing to do. So if you could just sort of explain the stock purchase and why, in your legal opinion, there was not an assignment of the contract?
Sure. First of all, my name's Richard Manzak. I'm an attorney with Varnum Law Firm, and I represented Rizzo Environmental Services on the sell side of the deal with GFL Environmental. The transaction was at the insistence of the seller, structured as a stock purchase agreement, and it was a stock purchase agreement actually one step removed from Rizzo Environmental Services. Rizzo Environmental Services, before the transaction, was owned by a holding company called Rizzo Holdings. Rizzo Holdings was in turn owned by another group of investors, which included Kinderhook, a private equity fund, and then various individuals part of management and other affiliates of Kinderhook. And what happened was that the stock in Rizzo Holdings was sold by the Rizzo Group to an indirect U.S. subsidiary of GFL in a stock purchase deal. So Rizzo Environmental Services is still owned by Rizzo Holdings, as it was before the transaction. And what, the only thing that happened was that the ownership of Rizzo Holdings changed. You now have new investors that own the company. As a result, since there was no change in the legal identity of the company at all, there was no assignment of the contract. No assets were transferred. It's just the same company with new ownership at an upper level. So the assignment clause in your contract that requires approval of the city for any assignment of the contract before it can be done was not triggered because there simply was no assignment.
The Rizzo Group, is that, is that still in existence? The Rizzo Group LLC?
Yes, I believe it still is, but it's not owned, I mean, it's
That's where Kinderhook sold out.
And it's still, yes. It's probably still in existence because it's settling up its affairs.
But, but the Rizzo Group LLC no longer has an interest in Holdings, Inc., which is
That's correct.
Okay. And the subsidiary for GFL, when I went through the transactions, its acquisitions IM actually did the, did the actual
Yes. Yes, they're, they're an indirect subsidiary through another couple of holding companies for tax purposes, because we have a cross-border transaction from, from Canada to the United States. And I, acquisition IM was a Delaware corporation that acquired the stock in Rizzo Holdings. And then immediately upon that acquisition, acquisition IM merged into Rizzo Holdings. So what we have now is, you know, just Rizzo Holdings owning Rizzo Environmental Services. Rizzo Environmental Services changed its name at about the same time that the merger took place to GFL Environmental USA, Inc., but it is the same legal entity as Rizzo Environmental Services was.
So all you had to do when you changed your name was change the name on the articles. Is that how you did it?
It's an amendment to the certificate of
You just did amendment to the articles, changed the name?
Exactly.
Okay. And so now, GFL is a wholly-owned subsidiary of the Holdings Company now?
Correct.
Correct, okay, all right.
Is there another question?
Thank you.
Who owns the, okay. When Duncan sold to Rizzo, was that an asset purchase?
Yes.
Okay. So all the equipment that Duncan owned then became Rizzo's equipment?
Correct.
When GFL purchased Rizzo Holdings?
Yes.
Were the assets of Duncan part of Rizzo Holdings?
Yes, they were. One, Rizzo Holdings of Rizzo Environmental Services.
Okay.
But since Rizzo Holdings owns Rizzo Environmental Services, then it's now indirectly owned by GFL.
That's what I was getting at. So Duncan now, I mean, the assets of Duncan are now part of GFL indirectly
Correct.
Through these various holding companies.
Right.
Okay. So to get around the asset purchase, which would have made it an assignment, you basically made it into a stock transfer. What stock? Was the stock Rizzo's stock, or was stock created?
No, there was, there was stock that had been issued from Rizzo Holdings to Rizzo Group, and Rizzo Group sold their stock.
When did, when were these negotiations begun?
It's been ongoing off and on for a year.
Okay, so when Rizzo bought over, bought
Bought Duncan, I think it was in May.
Yeah, those negotiations were already ongoing between you and
Yeah, not really. Everything sort of broke down in the spring of 16, and then started again in end of July.
All right. My concern is, to get around the assignment, you pretty much created, I don't care how you phrase it, but you created a stock transfer so that you didn't have to worry about the assignment coming in front of us? I mean, is that essentially what it is?
No.
No.
I mean, oh, the reason, we didn't, we didn't buy the stock to get around the assignment provisions. I mean, there is, there's multiple contracts that were, that we have today, that even with the stock transfer, it required consent. It was just the language, the way it was drafted in your contracts, that it didn't require consent. But there were multiple contracts we had to get consent for pre-September 30th before we could close. It's just the language in your, in your contracts. But from a tax perspective, and for the simplicity of the transaction, it made more sense to buy stock versus assets.
All right.
But we didn't specifically do it to get around
I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to respond, and Rick, you could tell me if I'm wrong. You know, when you do a stock transaction, you do a stock transaction for various reasons. Most times when you do the stock transaction, it's for tax purposes that you can't get when you're doing the asset purchase. So the contractual obligations aren't the issue when you're doing a stock purchase, it's the actual tax benefit that comes down the line. And without getting into any detail, you have a major difference between assumption of liability on the stock purchase side versus an asset purchase side. So actually, when you purchase the stock, you've got some liability that you could have avoided if you had gone through an asset purchase.
In hindsight
Would you have done an asset purchase?
With this transaction, we would have done an asset deal, given what we learned on October 14th.
But that's okay. Thank you.
I'm done. So you just mentioned the date, October 14th, and obviously, that was relatively not too long ago, so this is all kind of fresh in my mind, and of the residents I spoke to, fresh in their mind. And this whole situation now, from everything I've looked into and I've heard, GFL doesn't, you're kind of just thrust upon and put into a bad situation that you didn't have any knowledge of. So, but with that being said, just understanding, my point of view is, we've had the same service for numerous years, many years, almost decades. And a gentleman in a family company, Duncan, that's provided a valuable resource, involved in the community, and involved in events, sponsorships, all sorts of wholesome family things for our community. And then we find out about Rizzo, and then very quickly, we find out about GFL. So, like it or not, unfortunately, you are tied, as was mentioned, to that Rizzo name and a little bit tainted. So with you in front of us today, I'm looking for some sort of reassurance, or even an agreement stating that you can state with confidence that 100% of corruption has been eliminated. Are you willing to make that statement?
I can't, I can't make that statement to you, because I don't know what happened pre-us owning the business. I mean, we know what we've read, and we know what our investigations saying, but I can say it was eliminated from the date that we owned the business, but I can't say it's been eliminated from anything, may it happen, previous to September 30th.
Okay. So if I can get some reassurance, it's that you are taking the steps to do the internal investigations?
Yeah, we already have. I mean, it's, listen, we, through the, as she mentioned earlier, through the stock purchase agreement, we assume liabilities when we buy the stock versus, in an asset deal, you don't take any of the liabilities that came with the business. We bought the stock, so we actually own the liabilities, and we have extensive holdbacks, et cetera, from the previous shareholder group that we can rely on. So we're taking all the steps to go through the books and records, the financial records, you know, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of emails from certain individuals to make sure that, you know, everything from our perspective, that we have 100% comfort that nothing has happened.
So my next question is, as I mentioned, this has really been kind of thrust upon us quickly. So my next concern is, it relates to our residents, again, with the type of service that we've come to expect, and the response time, and not only that, but the cost to our taxpayers. So I know that the contract isn't up for, Lynn, what is it, 2000?
2018, I believe.
2018, so we have some time to work with you. And I'm in the corporate world, and I understand that you can't guarantee prices or say, hey, I'm going to hold you to this, especially in a meeting like this. But I am looking for some, also some reassurance, that when we come time for the new contract to come up, that you do intend to keep pricing in line, let's call it, and obviously, make the same type of service throughout and going forward.
Listen, our model in Canada and the U.S. is the same. I mean, our focus is on providing the best service for the best price. I mean, that's how we've won the amount, you know, we do over a billion dollars a year in revenue in Canada, and we've built that over the last 10 years by doing exactly that, is providing the best service for the best price. I mean, we're committed to this market, you know, we service 55 communities here now, and we want to service 100 communities here. So we're going to keep plowing ahead with the exact same business plan that we had before, and losing customers is, is not an option for us. So we're highly focused on ensuring that starts with service, and then obviously, the price has to be competitive, or you're going to, it doesn't matter what the price is, if the service is bad, you're not going to want to deal with us.
And I guess my, my last question is just involve, when it comes time to the community involvement, as I mentioned, we are used to having people take part in the parades and donating to Relay for Life, or whatever the case may be. I remember Duncan always had the, not only Relay for Life, but all the events, they provided free dumpsters, just because, you know.
We do the same, and just a little bit about our business, we're highly focused on regional management, like I said earlier. So the same regional management group that you, that's been maintaining your contracts for a lot of time, we allow and empower those managers to maintain the local relationships and the local relationships are very important to our business. And we think it leads to the most successful execution. So anything that's been done in the past, we continue supporting the communities that we service. It's just part of, of what we do, so don't expect anything to change from that.
Okay, so, and then, sorry, one just last question is, if, for example, I know I get a lot of times people say, hey, I'm having an issue with, you know, trash not being picked up or something. They, obviously that's why we're elected, is to represent people. Would we, do you have a main go-to person contact you can share with Lynn, or would it be the same people?
Same people.
From Rizzo, okay.
Nothing's changed.
I just wanted to.
From a customer service man, no.
Okay, that's, that's all I have, thank you very much for coming today.
Okay.
I think you can find here, just from the tone of everybody, that we were sort of spoiled with garbage pickup here in this town. And someone who lived in this community for a lo, for quite a while, and kids grew up with some of our kids and, and did a tremendous job. And timing is everything, timing is everything, you know, and I mean, when I say that, I mean, it's unfortunate the way that all turned out. And we just happen to be in right there in the middle of those crosshairs when all this took place. So I definitely, I'm glad you're here today to explain to us and answer the questions and everybody. A consultant, Chris Wall, it's very good questions, I think you answered very well, so, that's what I have to say.
Did you have some?
I did, I'll just keep it brief, but it was already addressed. My main focus was what further assurances you were going to provide because as a counsel, we entered into this contract and it was actually rather quickly. It was very touch and go. So it kind of falls back on us because we entered into the contract and in light of the circumstances that now surround the companies, it seems as though it's tainted. So you already covered it earlier with your further assurances that you're going to comply, your employees are going to be going through training, so as long as those compliances are in effect, that's all that I wanted to know. And again, thank you for coming out because I think the first step in damage control is coming out and addressing the situation so we can see you, we can ask our questions and we can have our concerns addressed, so thank you for being here.
No problem.
Thank you very much for showing up and answering these questions. Quite honestly, I think it's completely unrealistic that you're being held responsible for the behavior of some people in intermediate roles in your, your corporation. As long as you're, I mean, you seem to have bent over backwards to make sure that you're, you've got systemic things that are trying to, to weed out those problems and prevent that from taking place. You know, you can't make an assurance to us because you simply don't have oversight on every single person's every move. But we've got a particularly, well, and secondly, I wanted to say that, you know, you're, you're making an assumption that we have this relationship with these managers. They've only been here for months, so I mean, it really is a, a very fresh thing for us. We've had Duncan for quite a long time, so Rizzo's management team has only been here for a little while. I haven't heard anything that would lead me to believe that we're not going to find satisfactory performance from your company, but that's the, the part that I wanted to make sure that you understand. That is the most critical aspect of this contract to this community is the fact that you guys perform precisely to the contract. And we've got a, I don't know how familiar you are with ours and how it pits against an awful lot of the other, the surrounding communities, but we've got a, a rather enhanced version of a, the contract, you know, with appliance removal and refrigerators and things of that nature. And those are really the important aspects of the contract to us. There seemed to have been some kind of a, a slack off of, when Duncan was getting ready to, to make the transition, it seemed like some of those things were sort of becoming contested. So I was really happy to see when Rizzo took over that they took full responsibility for maintaining the level of service and the things that were directly written into the contract. So as long as that, that remains the same, the only thing I would hope is that we might end up, I would like us to be able to extend our existing contract. So as long as your price doesn't go anywhere in a bad way and, and you maintain the same level of service and the, the complete breadth of things that we enjoy right now, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied with what you've got going on. And again, thank you very much for showing up.
Yeah, and that's our goal, we want to, we obviously have to prove ourselves to you, but that's our goal is to continue getting these contracts extended. And the way we're going to do that is maintaining price and continue providing the best service. So that's a pretty simple thing to do and it's a win-win for both of us.
It's a pretty winning, winning formula.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two hundred old business, consider approval of the final site plan for Thomasville development.
Yes, I'd like to assert that I have a conflict of interest, may I have the floor? This is actually going to be a little bit of an interesting discussion tonight on conflicts of interest. So I've taken the time to sort of prepare a little bit more than what I normally would do. Individuals are here from Colonial Lakers, so you'll have an opportunity to sort of hear this issue regarding conflicts of interest and the problems that you have when you work through a conflict of interest. Conflicts of interest, as we all know, are with us in bus, in the business world, including the work environment, including government, particularly universities and politics. It's been very interesting watching the presidential race and watching the conflicts of interest with the Clinton Foundation and now with President-elect Trump and his business interests as he begins to move into the White House. Many colleges and universities have set up, and sometimes high schools, depending on.
Excuse me, Jen, point of order, this isn't on the agenda item, this is.
Yeah, it's a conflict of interest.
In this case, I don't think it's so bad, being we have lots of history, our government AP students in the audience. It's not a bad little small discussion, take it, Maggie, please keep it brief.
Oh, yeah, I'll keep it. So many colleges, universities, and even sometimes schools have what's called a committee that they set up to help them manage what's called their conflicts of interest. And, and if you're experienced at managing conflicts of interest, then you're going to be able to make a good, good business decision and you're going to come to a good resolution regarding how this conflict of interest may or may not affect how you're trying to move forward. Generally, conflicts of interest for the students and for the Colonial Lakers, it's defined either by your statute, Colonial Lakers. I think you might have bylaws, I'm not sure if you have conflicts of interest in there or not. Cities have statutes, but generally, a conflict of interest, a, a very general definition is when you have a financial or personal consideration that may compromise your business judgment. So you want to make sure that when you're making a business decision, that you're not making it under the influence of something other than what is in the best interest of the entity. A starting place with a conflict of interest is to identify whether a conflict of interest even exists. And sometimes conflicts of interest don't even arise in the beginning of a transaction. You don't notice it until at the end of a transaction. I remember many years ago when I was working on a deal and I was representing the seller and the buyer did not tell us about this conflict of interest until the day that we were executing documents. In that particular case, people didn't panic, nobody got angry, nobody threw their hands up, nobody sent out nasty emails or accused anybody. It was a conflict of interest. And if you're good at managing conflicts of interest, these are things that are just very normal. You work through the process, you work on how you're going to resolve it, and you get on with your life. In this particular case, the buyer clearly, clearly had no intent to cover up the conflict of interest. It just occurred actually the morning of the transaction and the buyer did the right thing. The buyer immediately, immediately disclosed that there was a conflict of interest. For where we're at tonight, in the case at hand, everybody knows, most people know, I represented Colonial Lakers Phase Five in the utility dedication. And that was in about 2004. Apparently, in, in that period of time, some land had been sold to a developer. I did not represent either side of that transaction, never saw any documents. I don't know what the terms were of the sale, I don't know who bought it, whether it was an individual or the developer himself or herself. I kind of know who the parties are, but I, I do not know for a fact, don't even know what the property sold for. The earliest I learned that the property sold was when I was sitting on the planning commission and a developer, who is not always the person who buys the property, came in and wanted to develop the property. So at the last council meeting, I made sure that I asserted, I didn't say I had a conflict of interest. What I said was, I need to disqualify myself from voting on anything with Colonial Lakers. And I do want to make it very clear that no one from Colonial Lakers ever contacted me to ask me to assist on this project, this Thomasville project, with respect to an easement. In fact, the city attorney who worked with me on the dedication of Colonial Lakers Phase Five never contacted me and said, oh, by the way, we have an easement here, are you going to be handling this? Are you going to be doing it? So at Monday night's meeting, I, with an abundance of caution, stated that I had, that I could, that I would have to disqualify myself from voting. People like me, who are experienced in professionally managing conflicts of interest, the first thing you learn early in managing conflicts of interest is to send up the red flag immediately, immediately, immediately. And the reason you do that is that you need to stop the decisional process of the deliberative body so that a determination can be made whether or not a conflict exists and if it does, how you're going to manage it. What I did at that meeting was prob, was, was a professional response. It was a professional response in years of assisting clients, working through conflict of interest issues, whether they're sitting on a board of directors or in a transaction. What I actually did was a model for all members of this council to follow. It's, it's a teaching moment. In conflict of interest issues, the first thing you do, the first thing you do is raise that red flag, raise it, and stop the decision-making process until things can be further identified, clarified, or resolved. This couldn't have been handled more perfectly. So you raise the red flag, and that's what I did. And I told the representative from the developer that I would get the easement to the right person. That night, it didn't happen until sometime later on Tuesday. By early Tuesday evening now, my contact at Colonial Lakers confirmed that she had not seen the easement, didn't know about it, and had asked for my assistance on drafting, or drafting or resolving it. At this point in time, I do have a conflict of interest, and I did on Tuesday, but I have worked through how I am going to manage this conflict of interest. I do want to let counsel know that the exact parameters of my legal representation are still being defined. I know that I won't be paid for anything that I review and I will not be performing any drafting or negotiating on the, on the easement. There'll be another attorney stepping in. Additionally, the client is pretty adept at real estate matters, so she just may decide to handle this on her own. So first, let's move on to how I am going to manage this conflict of interest. First, I reject any legal advice from the city attorney on how I am going to manage this conflict of interest for my professional career. As I have said in many instances before, I don't trust the city attorney's legal judgment and I have found him deceitful and I, well, I'm going to finish.
That's out of order, that is totally out of order.
This is, well, I have specific reasons why I don't trust the city attorney. He lied to the investigators.
You're not going to listen, are you?
Okay, okay, this is what happened. So this is how I am going to manage, this is how, this is how I am going to manage this conflict of interest. The first thing I'm going to do.
Excuse me.
I'm telling you how I'm going to manage it. Okay.
Excuse me for a second, we said, please keep it brief, I know that's difficult.
Well, now I need to go into how it's being managed.
Without getting into the personal attacks on everybody.
So what I'm going to do is, I am not going to talk to the representative for the developer. I am not going to talk to the city attorney, of course. I'm not going to talk to any entity that is deemed necessary to, for consent of the easement. I will only converse with the client and that'll be it. So anybody else that's in the loop that will need to work through this easement, you'll need to work through that other attorney. I will not discuss, nor have I discussed this easement with anybody on council. You know, I, I don't think that that's a problem for me at all. So the only time I discussed this easement was at a public meeting, but I have not made any phone calls to anybody on council. I have not spoken to the city manager about this, any employee or any member on any commission. This is not hard for me to do because my contact with city council is minimal. Also, I have decided that for, I had to think about this for a little bit, but the reason I'm going to exclude myself from any comment of the planned development agreement, the master deed, et cetera. Under normal circumstances, I think I could probably have some input on this, but I am going to also exclude myself from any discussion on the planned development agreement, on the master deed, on the bylaws or anything. And the reason is, is because the easement itself is, the development itself is contingent on the easement. If that had not been made a condition, then I think that I would, in fact, be able to provide comment and vote on the general development itself. But I'm completely getting out of that loop too. Next, any attorney-client communication on this matter, whether it comes from the city attorney or anybody on city council, whether it's privileged or not, I ask that I be removed as of tonight. So just make sure that I don't get any documents regarding this matter. You'll have an attorney contacting you that you can communicate with and get your information that way. Next, it's not required under any legal authority that I reviewed or my attorneys reviewed that I leave the council table during the debate on this matter or even during the vote. However, the city attorney believes that this is necessary because apparently by me sitting here, I have a certain amount of influence over these people on city council. So I don't want to do that, I don't want to influence them. They may make, may make the wrong decision if I'm sitting here. So, so I'm not going to sit here at the council table because they need to be protected. The next thing that is a little bit of a debate is the city attorney now wants me to leave the room. He now wants me to, well, well, he now wants me to leave the room and we're going to get a less, a public lesson on this one. He wants me to leave the room when a decision is being made. And for me, that I am not going to do. And the reason for that is, it's a legal reason, is because it has to do with the Open Meetings Act. I have a statutory right, protected under the law of the state of Michigan, to remain in an open meeting anywhere in the state of Michigan. I can attend any meeting I want as long as I peacefully observe the deliberations going on and I observe how government decisions are being made. I will sit in the audience, I will sit in the council chambers, and I will observe how this government operates. If my statutory rights are being violated, if I am being asked to move, if I am being asked to leave this room, then I have been advised that I have a legal right to sue the city and to pursue any rights and remedies that I may have under the Open Meetings Act. And it's important for me to inform counsel that the penalties for violating the Open Meetings Act includes a misdemeanor. But you cannot exclude me from an open meeting. The fact that you would even suggest that the city violate the Open Meetings Act and throw this body into litigation evidences to me a complete misunderstanding of what the Open Meetings Act is about. So I'm going to sit in the audience during the discussions that will be forthcoming. I will not discuss with anybody anything and I will remain and peacefully observe the operations of how this government operates. I'm going to be a reminder to counsel and everyone who sits in this room that the Open Meetings Act is about transparency of government. The Open Meetings Act protects the people. The Open Meetings Act is about transparency and inclusivity of government. It is not about deliberating in front of your friends. I will not leave this meeting and I will exert my rights under the Open Meeting Act to peacefully observe the workings of local government. And the best evidence, if anybody has it, of anybody trying to ask me to leave tonight, I would ask that they turn it over. And that would include any communication from the city, from the city attorney that asked me to leave this room. There are criminal sanctions for violating the Open Meetings Act. Thank you, and I will now let them continue.
What's amazing about your commentary is that you are the one that created this mess and now we're left to deal with it. I mean, that's what's going on here. You, I, I guess my underst, my question is, what is the nature of your representation? Seriously, are you a, an attorney of record for your client? No? No? So you're not representing any interests of your client?
I spoke to her about this issue, and that's the conflict.
Well, the problem is, we received a notification saying that you are now representing your client. So are you now saying you're not representing your client?
There'll be an attorney contacting you.
I'm sorry?
There'll be an attorney contacting you. You can move forward if that's what-
No, no, no. This is about your representation now. The whole-
I have a conflict of interest I need to remove myself. You just move forward, do you need? You won't be negotiating this issue.
Then why the commentary for the last 10 minutes? If you now are saying-
Now, 13 minutes.
-that you have a conflict of interest, but now you said that you weren't representing them. That's, that's where the confusion is. And then, I'm a little taken aback by the fact that you won't allow us, as a council, to ask our city attorney if there's a conflict, when you just mentioned that you yourself sought your own legal representation. You are asking us, you're pretty much setting the guidelines for how you're going to deal with the conflict of interest from your point of view. We have no idea how to address this conflict of interest, number one, and number two, we have every right to ask the city attorney about a mess you created.
Well, I didn't create the mess.
You could have said no.
I did say no. That's why there's another attorney coming on board.
Then why this whole commentary?
Because I discussed it with the client. I acknowledge it's a conflict.
All right, I'm, I'm, no, wait a minute. No, we're going to stop right now. We're going to move on. We're going to get this taken care of tonight. This could go on for hours. We already know why, so.
I have a quick comment.
One comment.
So-
And then we're going to move on.
I just want to, I want to bring it all back to the actual issue here. If there's a conflict of interest, I do appreciate you coming forward. I commend you for coming forward, because it's the professional thing to do, but because this is a history lesson tonight, and we have students in the audience, there is a level of profession, a level of being professional in which, yes, you should disclose, but you also should keep in mind as well, too, that you show respect as well to one another, to whether it's the city attorney, whether it's, whether you disagree, you don't agree, show some respect. So, yes, I commend you for disclosing, but at the same time, if you put half as much effort into the commentary that you did, if you put that effort into the city, we would have wonders happening right now. So, thank you.
City Attorney Tim.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to clear up the record real quick on one point. There's never been a request that a council member with a conflict of interest is, mandatorily must leave the room. There was a discussion between council member Kurzweil and myself. There was a recognition that the conflict existed. I applaud her for bringing that and finding that and identifying it. That horse is out of the barn. If she's had that communication, and she believes that she's representing a client, the question is, what do we do going forward? As a best practice, I would think, and this is, maybe, maybe I could use different language, but as a council member with a conflict of interest, the best practice would be to remove yourself from the discussion, to avoid the impression that you're influencing something you have a conflict of interest with. So there's been no demand or requirement that a council member with a conflict leave the council chambers, or try, there's no allegation of a violation of the Open Meetings Act. It was simply a discussion and a recommendation as to the best practice on how to respond to that existence of a conflict of interest.
But in your opinion, it is that the person who disclosed the conflict should remove themselves from the city council chambers?
As a best practice, that council member should want to leave, and let the discussion occur without them being involved.
No, but that was your actual legal opinion.
That was advising. I think you're just advising us.
That was my recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, your legal opinion was to leave.
Best practice.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't, I'm not here to argue, guys. I mean-
Best practice. We're not going to get into semantics again tonight. This is, this is going to go on forever, and we have to put a stop to it here. Councilwoman Kurzweil's excused herself to be up in the crowd. She says she's not going to participate. The opinion of the attorney, best practice, was to excuse herself. She chose not to.
Right.
I'd like to talk about this, the item.
That's what I just said.
The, okay, since, since we still don't have any understanding that they've satisfied what are, are, the things necessary to move forward with this, I move that we postpone this until the parties can comply to the, you know, the recommendation of Planning Commission, RPD, and, and FIRE, to have that easement in particular completely open, so.
John, I have a comment.
Where are we at with this one?
As of this afternoon at 5:00, the final language on the PUD and the master deed were not complete, and we did not have a signed cross-access easement.
Did they say when possibly they would have it completed? Like a timeline roughly?
I have not gotten a time since our meeting with them last Monday. They said they were going to work on it, but even then, they did not give a timeframe.
It's been a while.
There's a motion on the floor.
Been a while, and we asked that question. It was very specific.
Yes.
Motion, and then there's a second, and then we'll be discussing.
There was a second.
Was there a second?
I don't think there was a motion. Did someone make a motion? Oh, you made it?
I didn't hear one.
We have a motion.
You didn't hear it?
I didn't hear a second.
No, we have, we have a motion to table. There's a second.
To postpone.
I'll make, I'll make a second to that, but I would like to make a comment and a recommendation to the maker of the motion, that we just table it, not postpone it to a date certain. Tabling it just puts it on the table, and when all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, someone will make a motion to take it from the table, and we will act on it.
Okay.
So my suggestion or recommendation is that you amend your motion, and then I'll second that.
I do have a discussion.
I would like to end up making, or take that recommendation to table this until such time as it's requested to put back on the table.
Can you withdraw your motion?
He amended it.
He amended it.
And I'll second, continue to second it.
All right. For a discussion. Thank you.
So I've read the minutes from the Planning Commission, and I know a lot of the backstory on this, and I understand that this development has caused a lot of, I'll just say, controversy, and-
Motion to table is not debatable. No, there's further discussion. I wasn't debating the motion.
So anyhow, there is a lot of controversy. I understand that. And these developments are supposed to be a nice transition from Trotters Point to, to the developed Thomasville, and then Colonial Acres. There's not supposed to be a disruption between, to the Colonial Acres residents. So with that being said, at the last meeting, I did request a list of things. For example, a list of restrictions, a list of restrictions that were originally in the Planning Commission. I know it's spelled out in the agreement, but I want to know clearly what was called out in the Planning Commission that has been removed, or has included or not included. Also, a signed agreement from Colonial Acres, which we have established we have not had. And finally, the most important for me is, before I can give my blessing on this and approve this, I absolutely want to see buy-off from the Board of Directors, from Colonial Acres, from Phase One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. So before I will give my blessing, I want to make sure every single resident in Colonial Acres has signed up to this, has given their approval. Without that, I am not voting for this. Thank you.
Once again, a motion, motion to table is not debatable, is not-
Your comment had nothing to do with the motion.
And it's not up for pandering either.
We do have time. It is part of the discussion.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Will there be public comment now?
I don't see why not.
John, we talked about this before the meeting. You said you would like to hear a public comment, so.
I'm okay with that.
It was up to me, but not up to me.
I don't know whether it's worthwhile having the public comment right now. I really don't.
Well, the issue has been brought forward to the community, and the community is not here. And we would like you to hear our concerns. If we knew that this was going to be tabled, we would have spoken to a public comment time, but we did not know that.
Well, we didn't know all the information wasn't going to be approved and by the people that were supposed to bring it to us, and it hasn't been. So I don't want to get in an argument with the crowd. I mean, you guys are right. You're right to be heard, but we also have a right to, we had some very specific questions that we asked to be done two weeks, two and a half weeks ago, and they weren't adhered to. And everybody up here is all agreeing to that, and we're, it's in the best interest of your community that those interests are followed by the people that are putting these contracts together at a much higher level, which are going to affect your guys' lives. And so our job is to protect that nature of that part of the business, and they didn't fulfill it. So, yes, I'd love to hear what you guys have.
But does the council know that it is not only Colonial Acres, which is two separate partnerships, Colonial Hunt, Colonial Land Development, each of which has board of directors that are up to 18 members? Then there are Phase One, Two, Three, Four, and Five boards of directors that have to approve that to get access to 11 Mile from Pontiac Trail.
John, you should just let go on the microphone.
That is the only way that it will happen, because it is private property.
Okay.
So that's for them to resolve.
That's for you guys, yeah, absolutely.
And that's more, and nobody from Thomasville has approached any of it.
That's what, we're kind of agreeing with you.
Any of it.
I mean, that's why we're tabling it.
That's, that's exactly right.
That's exactly why we're tabling it.
I would like to hear further input, though. I mean, we're here.
I mean, I kind of got the idea, I mean, I think we kind of got the idea why we're tabling it.
Does someone have a different version of this story? I mean, it's essentially an amplification of what was just said, correct?
I think-
So why, why would we end up spending the next half an hour saying the same thing?
I think you should go to the microphone, though, so that you could put it on where everyone could hear it on the video as well, just for our personal purposes. Unless it's not okay with you, John, I'm sorry. Go ahead. John, you run the meeting. I'm sorry.
Why not?
I have a question about the requirement for an additional easement. Are there not two entrances and exits from the property? Was it because the fire department required access to another road, so that they could come in from Pontiac Trail? I don't understand that part. I'm Pamela Ortner, and I live at 61354 Heritage Boulevard.
That was fire's recommendation. That was PD's recommendation.
Okay.
And no, there are not two other accesses. There is only one other access, other than Lexington Drive.
My question would be, the fire department goes to the residents that are north of 11 Mile Road, and they, if they are off a certain road, they have to go through that road to require them to have access to Heritage Boulevard, to Pontiac Trail. It's, doesn't make sense, because the residents on the north side don't have such an access road. But I wanted to briefly talk just about the safety. My question to you is, I won't do it today, if we will have time in the future, to talk about the other concerns that we have. Or is it going to be something that's just voted on?
Had you attended the public hearings from Planning Commission?
No, we just found out about this. We didn't know anything about it.
That's right. And the website has not been updated, and that's been a major problem.
So there's been no access to public information that way.
The Planning Commission decisions were made months ago. It was not made within the last month and a half. Nothing has been decided on this in the last month and a half, other than what happened at the council meeting two weeks ago.
That's right. And we would like, the only way that we found out was one of our members was watching the city council chambers.
Every member of Colonial Acres would have received notice of the public hearing on the site plans, and anything having to do with Thomasville when the development was in front of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, didn't happen.
No, never happened.
Our office manager is here, and she did not receive that notice.
I don't think it's unfair to hear your, your safety concerns. I mean, all of us should be concerned with what, whatever safety issues are out there, of course. And, you know, we talk about a lot of things at this table, and to hear the residents' concerns for even 15, 20 minutes, whatever it takes, I don't see why we wouldn't.
I'm not going to be long.
That's fine. I'd love to hear it.
I think it's important, it's our duty to hear you speak.
The only thing that I want to make-
I appreciate that.
The only thing is, absolutely, but the only thing I want to make sure is you understand is, two weeks ago, we postponed it, because we asked very specific questions that didn't get answered.
We know that, and we appreciate that.
All of us agreed against tonight, and we said no.
We appreciate it.
So we're on your side here, you know?
We're not against you.
I mean, we're trying to do the right thing, and-
We can work together on this.
This can go on all night long, technically, you know?
It's not going to go all night long. I'm, I'm a nurse, but even-
We understand, we understand how upset everybody is, and that's part of the reason why we were trying to make everybody understand how upset we were about it, that it's not moving to the next level.
No, we heard, we heard that there were people that spoke up for our community, and we appreciate it. So if I can take two minutes.
Okay.
I'm a nurse, but I don't have to be a nurse to be concerned about increased traffic. We have a lot of active, older folks, I'm not going to say elderly, but that walk and walk their dogs, and we don't have sidewalks, and to have increased traffic is a concern, especially people that don't live there and don't know. Now, the speed bumps may stop them, but may not. So we have a concern about that. There will be increased traffic from Pontiac Trail going into Heritage Boulevard, and there already has been one accident recently, as recent as the last year. And I know that's been brought before the council before. Has there been any traffic flow studies done? Those are other concerns that we have. So those are some of my concerns, and that's, I'll step back for now, for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, can you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you mind, well, I'll get them from the tape. I was wanting, I didn't write those down quick enough. I'd want to have those addressed before the next, or at least.
Safety concerns, because of our folks that are active.
Okay.
And light on, traffic light, and traffic studies from 11 Mile Road and from Pontiac Trail as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I'm Bruce Huber, 25234 Franklin Terrace. I am currently the director, the president of Phase Three, and I'm on the Joint Board of Directors for Phase One through Four. My concerns, as I've voiced to our community, is the fact that this is tried and pushed through, which we appreciate you stopping, but if it's the city who needs this access from Pontiac Trail all the way up to 11 Mile Road, why doesn't this city, by eminent domain, take over Heritage Boulevard, and pay for the plowing of it, and pay for the maintenance of it? This is private property that we maintain. We plow, we install speed bumps to try and slow people down who are going from Pontiac Trail to 11 Mile. That's the, to the extent that we've had to go. We've asked for patrol to come in and enforce speed limit? No, it's private property. But yet you are granting an easement? It doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on.
All right, move on. Thank you.
Let's see if we can get one more item in.
Consider approval of the second reading-
This is real business.
-of Housing Commission ordinance amendment.
I'll support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All?
Consider approval of a quitclaim deed for South Lion Housing Authority.
I will turn this over to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, Council, so this is, as you've been provided on several of the agenda notes, including the last meeting, related to the ordinance amendments, there's what's called a, a RAD, or Rental Assistance Demonstration Conversion, which allows the Housing Commission to utilize different financing. I don't know the details of this. I've been relying heavily on the executive director, and I had some meetings back in 2012, and had more detail. If the council is interested in that detail, you may want to have the executive director come in and explain it. But it's my understanding that at that time, that they, the Housing Commission believed this was a good thing, and this is, HUD has advised that the way the property for this housing is titled with the city's name on it, that the city must quitclaim and leave the Housing Commission as the sole title holder. We've received a, a title commitment that shows who the title holder is, the legal description, what the restrictions are on this. So I've prepared a quitclaim deed that the city would execute, and quitclaims its interest due to the deed that currently is in the city's name on behalf of the Housing Commission, would quitclaim its, its interest to, directly to the Housing Commission and take the city out of the chain of title. So, what you've been provided is an agenda note that explains some of this, the proposed quitclaim deed, current warranty deed that shows the city acting on behalf of the Housing Commission. The declar- declaration of trust is in there to show you that the, this is subject to restrictions and the declaration of trust relate, between the HUD and the city's Housing Commission. And then there is the RAD use agreement, which provides you with additional background information related to the rental assistance demonstration. Are there any questions at this point?
This was driven by, by HUD, right? I mean, that we had to divest from that, this had, yeah, right.
I have one question.
I mean, if we want the money, we, like...
Is this property currently on the city's tax rolls, meaning that we're paying taxes on it?
We don't actually pay taxes on it, but it is titled under us and is currently under our liability insurance.
Okay, so, when this switches over to the South Lion, South Lion Housing Commu- Commission, they would have to get their own liability?
They'd have to get their own property and liability insurance, yes.
Okay.
But it still won't be a tax generator.
I'm on the Housing Commission for the last fourteen years, and we have worked towards this end now for about three years, working towards this RAD agreement.
Okay.
And this will really help not only the Housing Commission, but it frees up the city too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, on the original warranty deed, the, when it was originally granted, the grantee was the city, South Lion, Michigan Municipal Corporation, acting by and through the South Lion Housing Commission. Why is that grantee now not the grantor? That language is left off.
Uh, I see your point. Judgment call? I, I don't know that adding that, acting as the Housing Commission, would be the appropriate grantor because you're quitclaiming the interest. So, it would simply be a quitclaim of any interest the city has in the property being transferred and conveyed to the Housing Commission. So, you wouldn't, I, I think, you wouldn't want the city acting on behalf of the Housing Commission to quitclaim the interest, you want the city to quitclaim any interest in the property. Does that make sense?
Well, the original grantee in there actually was the city acting through its capacity as the South Lion Housing Commission. So, that's who the city was acting as, the South Lion Housing Commission. It says, acting by and through the South Lion Housing Commission. Is what you are doing with this quitclaim deed removing only the city of South Lion?
That's the objective, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, so that is, and then, yeah.
So, the argument might be that the city didn't have any interest because the grantee is acting on behalf, so you're simply...
That's, that's exactly my point. What was the, what was the city's interest to begin with?
And this, all this does is, to the extent there was any question about the city having an interest in the property, it's quitclaiming it to, directly to the Housing Commission.
Because the warranty deed would be different, but a quitclaim, you're just getting the city out. Then, on the declaration of trust, is, when I read this, is this trust still in effect? Is, is the trust, are you still holding on to proceeds from, from bonds, from development? I thought everything was developed over there.
I do not have direct information on the declaration of trust.
Why don't you terminate the trust? There, there's a condition in here that says how the trust terminates. If you're, if you're cleaning up the title, why don't you just do an affidavit of termination of the trust pursuant to whatever their condition is in here for terminating? I don't have sufficient financial information to know, though, whether the bonds are still out there, whether there's notes out there. My understanding was everything was pending.
This is all driven by the HUD. I, I'm trying to execute a quitclaim deed that the executive director of the Housing Commission brought to us with urgency. I'm trying to get the ordinance in, cleaned up so that the city can execute the quitclaim. If the council has questions regarding the declaration of trust and whether that should be terminated, I, I think that requires a much more detailed analysis of what that trust is, whether, and, and it would, obviously, we'd have to go to HUD and find out whether this is something that they rely on in providing housing assistance for the residents of South Lion.
What does HUD just want you to do, just clear the title?
They just want the city out of the chain of title as to any interest it had due to the way the original deed was, was framed, as the grantee.
Well, then, the city will still maintain an interest on the property through the trust. It, it says, whereas, city of South Lion, acting by and through the, the South Lion Housing Commission. It says that right in the first paragraph of the declaration of trust. So, the question is, is the city completely out of the chain with the trust still staying intact?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, well, for another day.
I'll make the motion that we approve the quitclaim deed from the city of South Lion, or removing the city of South Lion from the property located at four three two Washington Avenue, South Lion, Michigan.
I'll second.
Motion of a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Mayor, we had talked about taking our recess because of the driving restrictions, this might be a good time for that, because I think the next item may be a long discussion item as a ma- as a master plan.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
That means you guys can leave.
Bring up your papers.
I will sign for you.
Hi, how you doing? Good, you guys signature? Good to see you.
How's school, how's Mr. Samovsky's class? Oh, no, okay, good luck, get home, get some rest. I can take yours. Good luck.
Gives you a little insight on, not all of them are like Marcus of Queensbury Rule, it gets a little rough and tumble sometimes, eh? There you are. Oh, you're welcome. I'm sorry, there's your whole student. Take care.
My son's in the class. The redhead? He's already out, the redhead, the only redhead. Yeah, the redheaded student was mine, if you're trying to figure it out, so, that's why I had a fan club. Well, no, I mean, you had a nice fan club. That's a good thing.
I don't know why you have headaches.
All right, consider approval of Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
The Parks and Rec Commission has been working for quite some time on finalizing the new Parks and Recreation Master Plan, this covers all of the city parks. We've been working with Mark Russell, Russell Design, on the plan. You should have a copy in your pack as well, it's been on display in City Hall and published for the public hearing. Monday of last week, and listened to public comments, and then, we do have at least one member of the Parks and Rec Commission here, as well as Mr. Russell, if you've got any questions on it. But their recommendation is approval of this plan, which is required by the state every five years in order to maintain the funding that we already received for Volunteer Park and to apply for any future Parks and Rec grants.
Yeah, I've got a few things, actually. Firstly, there was just a, some corrections on page twenty-seven, I'm searching for it myself here. This is kind of menial, but nonetheless, it's English language, so we should probably write properly. Two-thirds of the way down, Objective C, at the end of that first line, it should be maintenance, not maintained. Okay, and I had a couple of comments. Page twenty-four, if I'm not mistaken, there's a, an allusion to the, the survey that had taken place online. This is perhaps just my own bone of contention, but we, we have these surveys, you said there was a hundred and eighty respondents, so approximately two-thirds of them, their, their first priority was for a splash park. So, that, I mean, that was given enough weight that it was actually in the verbiage in the document. You're speaking about a hundred and twenty people, which is one one-hundredth of one percent of the population of the city. It was an unscientific survey. I, I don't want to end up banging on it too hard, but it's just, that seems just so incidental that it really, I mean, I would have preferred the people that actually attended the meetings and were, or your just typical conversations that were really enamored with the idea of a splash park. I thought that held a lot more credence than someone that just saw this online and thought, well, I'll quit that. And page twenty-eight, towards the bottom, the Objective H, Action One, survey city residents as to the, to what types of facilities they'd like to see in the recreation center. I would hope, at some point, and I didn't see it in the document, that there had been a question of how much are you willing to pay for it? There's, all this stuff sing, goes as though it's a present. It's not a present, it's something that has to be paid for. So, I, I like the direction, I, I, I question how you come, there's an awful lot of money that's purported to be expended to make the improvements, and obviously, nothing happens for free. I'm just hoping that there's, in the chronology that you're laid out here for the next five years, there's a whole ton of money, and I don't see really viable places, the general fund certainly isn't going to be able to support those. I haven't seen evidence that the state is breaking down people's doors to end up affording money for parks. And I haven't, except for the, the leagues, I think that that's a very promising revenue stream. It's still, I mean, it seems as though it pales compared to what the improvements are going to cost. So, I'm hoping that there's, there's some, some way that you're planning on meeting this out with the available funding over the next five years, as opposed to trying to stick to that same, that hard pattern there.
Yeah, I, I'm Mark Russell with Russell Design, that, that's the objective. I mean, really, you, you spell out, you know, we, we did a pretty intense cost estimate for Volunteer Park, say, which, which really is a great portion of the funds for the next five years.
Sure.
It, it's not that that's a, that is a, that's a benchmark, but you don't have to achieve it necessarily.
Right.
You can peck away at it, just like we have done. We've carried over projects from the two thousand nine, two thousand twelve master plan forward into this document, that were completed in that previous five years.
Sure.
Or a little bit, a little bit longer than that. And we would do the same in the next update, in the next five years, that's what we would do, we would carry those things forward. There, there was a big discussion on, on millage, you know, all kinds of different things, and certainly grants was probably the most popular, and, but we, with grants, you have to have a match. And so, those are the things that we have to try to overcome. And how we do that, well, we're in that process now for Volunteer Park in Phase One, which we'll discuss a little bit later. But, you know, your point is well-taken, but I think it's, it's more breaking down those costs and spreading those out, not only at Volunteer Park, McCatty Park, and the other improvements, and the, and the other, maybe minor improvements in some of the smaller parks, but knowing, knowing that those all cost money, and we know that the general fund can't support that. So, that's, that's a benchmark, we don't know how far we can dig into that, but we'll do our best through fundraising and private donations. We've also talked about sponsorships and things of that nature. So, we're, we're not sure exactly where that's going to take us in the next five years, but we're hopeful that people will jump on board and, you know, maybe even sponsorships and naming rights and things of that sort that we've talked about, so.
Right. Well, I do appreciate the benchmarking everything on here in a wish list, that's a, you know, because then people can kind of envision what, what might end up happening there, so, and how to get there. And I wouldn't preclude the idea, if you got an attractive enough grant, I wouldn't preclude the idea that we wouldn't dip into, to general fund or fund balance to be able, if the return on that investment was big enough, it would clearly make sense to do it. So, it's just that I haven't seen a lot of evidence that those are out there, that's all.
Understood, understood. Yeah, and I just want to point out, too, Carmen Avantini co, kind of co-authored this with me, so he was, he was in total part in the document, in the preparation of the document. We were more the, the nuts and bolts kind of guy behind the scenes, but Carmen and I did the surveys together and some of the public meetings, so, just point of clarification.
I wanted to point out, too, that you should spell Margaret's name correct, Margaret Kurtzweil, you can drop an R.
All right.
And is Alex, I mean, was she in the conception of this document?
Yes, that's why her name's, that was, that was part of the, the discussion with the Parks and Recreation. We'll leave her name in there.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that, Margaret.
Joe. Oh, thank you.
Oh, it's okay, it's a tough name, but it's a good name.
Two, two things that really stood out for me is, well, first of all, very well done, I know this has been, been waiting and very much needed, so I'm glad to see this before tonight, so thank you, thank you, Mark. Two things that stood out was Volunteer Park paving those roads, I mean, we talk about, and we'll get to the, in a little bit today, get to the actual nuts and bolts of Volunteer Park and the cost and everything, but the, the actual paving of the roads, I mean, I see that as the immediate, I mean, I don't know how that plays into, if there's going to be ball fields in there, but you go in there, you're, it's almost like you're going into the sandpit, just you get sucked in, and I've received so much feedback that, that needs to be done, and at the very least, Bob, I know you guys try to get in there, but it's tough, I mean, those roads are...
Well, Oakland County grades that for us four times a year.
Yeah.
We pay them fifteen hundred dollars, and that's part of the work that they do along Pontiac, Dixboro Road, but they always pull in and do that. And it gets better as the summer goes on.
Yeah.
You know, springtime.
It gets rough, I know, and maybe, and I know, I don't want to put more work on you guys, but sometimes maybe we can just drop a plow and however you guys smooth it out.
Well, I don't have that kind of a plow, that's the problem. We don't have that piece of equipment that grades, you know? Baco won't do that.
It requires a road grader, which is not something the city has.
But I'd be happy to buy one. See if you can put that on.
I gotta think there's some way you can go in.
You're very practical. Well, I, I think not only, not only the pa-
A lot of fun to drive.
Not only the paving of the road, but Bob and I have talked about the grading of the road.
Yeah, and maybe if it had a proper grade and slope to it, we would direct water to the appropriate spot, which then could start to de-water the, some of the tougher... Something, I mean, like I say, you go in there and it's, sometimes it gets rough, and that's no offense to our, you know, not knocking it, it's just a fact, so, that stood out. And then, the next thing was Objective H on page twenty-eight, when it talks about the community center, one thing that does stand out to me is where it says, the city in conjunction with the South Lion Area Recreation Authority. So, I'm glad to see that it's in conjunction with SLARA, but does this mean that the objective is to actually put the community center in the city of South Lion? When it says, and I'm sorry, it says, it says, with the next five to fifteen years, the city in conjunction with the South should provide a community recreation center. So, does that mean in the city? What's your vision, or what's the community?
Well, it started out to be in the city, you know, and that, that died sometime ago.
Right, but we're talking about the next five to fifteen, so...
Yeah, I, maybe we could say the city with, in collaboration with adjacent communities, you know, or something like that. It's, that's not a known, there's not a known location.
Because what, what gives me the uneasiness, and, and certainly, I'm going to pass this, but my suggestion for, I mean, this is the, we're passing the final, so, but my, my personal opinion is that, just in the city of South Lion, we don't have room for, for a monstrosity. I mean, it's just, I'm not saying I'm not for it, I mean, but it needs to be somewhere where the population's growing. City, city of South Lion, as we all know, is not, is pretty much landlocked, and to plop some sort of a monument is not, is not, in my opinion...
Would you accept, Commissioner, would you, or Councilman, would you accept the city in conjunction with SLARA and adjacent communities?
That's perfect, that's exactly perfect. I want to just make it clear that, I, I don't want it to appear as if it should be in the city, and not to mention, you know, I, I'm still not sold that with all the development that's coming in the Lion Township, we have thousands of people, we've seen all the, all the growth, and that...
Yeah, I, maybe we could say the city with, in collaboration with adjacent communities, you know, or something like that. It's, that's not a known, there's not a known location.
Because what, what gives me the uneasiness, and certainly I'm going to pass this, but my suggestion for, I mean, this is the, we're passing the final, so, but my, my personal opinion is that just in the city of South Lyon, we don't have room for, for a monstrosity. I mean, it's just, I'm not saying I'm not for it, I mean, but it needs to be somewhere where the population's growing. City, city of South Lyon, as we all know, is not, is pretty much landlocked. And to plop some sort of a monument is not, is not, in my opinion...
Would you accept, Commissioner, or Councilman, would you accept the city in conjunction with SLARA and adjacent communities?
That's perfect. That's exactly perfect. I want to just make it clear that, I don't want it to appear as if it should be in the city. And not to mention, you know, I'm still not sold that with all the development that's coming in Lyon Township, we have thousands of people. We've seen all the, all the growth and that something like, I don't want to, I hate to say a Planet Fitness or a Lifetime or something like that can't be negotiated on one of their 33 square acres of, of open land somewhere. You know? So I would like to see, and this is out of your hands, I'm just talking more general, general terms, is, in my opinion, I mean, it's not cheap. And the schools are going to be, they're going to have to build more schools because of the growth in Lyon Township. That's going to be some taxes, you know, bumping up. And, you know, our roads, I know that discussion's going to come up, that's going to be more taxes bumping up. Eventually, enough is enough.
Right.
So private industry would be my preference for some sort of a community center.
Okay, thank you.
Having a little firsthand knowledge on this subject, I'm pretty convinced that in probably ten years, Lyon Township will have their own.
That's fine.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just, having worked on that committee for a long time, when you just ran the numbers of the type of community center that communities would need, you're in excess of $20 million. And I just can't, I can't see the communities at this point. I mean, I could see Lyon Township, right, ten years having their own, or something, a complex or something, similar to what they have in Novi, but...
Yeah, Novi, Lebonia.
Yeah, Lebonia, I just can't. I mean, I'd love to see it, and I worked hard to try to see if it was feasible, but I, I just, location and cost were the two major issues. So...
Yeah, certainly if we want to partner, sorry to interrupt, but certainly if we want to partner and you put that language in an adjacent community, that kind of makes...
I mean, that's your district library, so you can have a similar function.
Yeah.
Yes, my comments are, my name got corrected. Is, it's on page twenty-one. It lists the private parks. And Clark's Crossing has a small private park in there. It's just a great subdivision. It's just wonderful, it's just a wonderful community. It's small, it's intimate, and they've got a really, really nice little park tucked away. It's, it's over by the bike path. I don't recall if it has a name on the, on the site plan or not, but I'm pretty sure they have a small little...
Is that known for, I don't remember where that is.
I can get the name for you.
That's fine.
You know, but I want to make sure that they got recognition in here for also being part of, having a private park. The other thing too, is just to address the finances, is, you know, I hope we have the money to, to deal with this, because I've mentioned before, competition comes in the downtown area, and it's clearly coming in terms of recreational. Northfield Township just purchased like 27 acres on Whitmore Lake. That's going to be developed probably within the next five years. Their supervisor over there, Marsha Shockley, she just, Marlene Shockley, I think she just got elected this past fall, I think she's going to spearhead development of that, and that's fairly close to South Lyon. So I don't know, you know, you're competing for funds, and obviously, Northfield Township's far ahead of us. They have plans to, to develop fairly soon. So the, I don't know if they're going to raise their mill, I don't know how the financing is, but you're going to be competing with funds now, because that, they're, they're going to move forward with that.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of people that compete for those funds from the DNR.
Yeah, and, and the other thing too, in Lyon Township, I haven't read the minutes yet, and I've got to get over there and read them. It was my understanding that some of the developers in Lyon Township have kicked in a fund to develop the parkland on Milford Road. And I think they're up to about $100,000. And I think the way development is going over there in Lyon Township, that that land will be developed too. But that'll be with private funds coming from the developers. So they've got, I mean, I don't know how that's working out, and like I said, I haven't read the minutes, so I don't know how accurate I am, but that's what I heard. So once again, you know, you know, all around us, people are moving forward with the development of the recreational areas and where, where we're at, so...
Well, this is the first step in that endeavor. And I think that's, you know, if we can get this through the DNR, and there, there may be some questions from them and some clarifications as well, but this is the necessary step to ensure, not to ensure, but to at least apply, be able to apply for funding. It's a pretty populated process, you know, by all the different people, like you mentioned, all the people in different communities who want the funding. But I think it's important to get this document in there. And then, you know, we know that Amy Allen is working, you know, to get this committee together, to get the fundraising kicked off, well, she's already kicked it off, really. But it's just a, just a matter of getting, gaining some momentum behind that and getting some people to commit, in whatever that is. You know, we've talked about Phase One, you've seen the estimate for Phase One. It may be two phases. It may be three phases of Phase One. We don't know. So it's just a matter of, once you can get into the DNR and get, get approvals, it's not difficult to get additional funding, because the pro, the process or the project is completed and it basically markets itself.
I think you got a good crew on Parks and Recs. I haven't met all the new people that are on there. I should probably get to a Parks and Rec meeting in the next couple of months and just introduce myself to some of the new members that, that I personally don't know. But, but they just, I, I look at what they're doing, and they just seem like a really dedicated group of individuals. They have you, so...
They're great, they're great. Amy's wonderful, and she attends most, most of the meetings, if not all of the meetings. And she certainly is an advocate for this community.
Yeah, got a lot of confidence in, in that commission, so...
Yeah, good. Thank you.
I'll make the motion then that we approve the adoption of the resolution, adopting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye. Just a point of clarification, what I'll do is amend the document and get that to, submit it into the DNR process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider approval of the City of South Lyon Master Plan.
Oh, sorry, I only want to plan a meeting.
No, we do them all together, and then they're done.
That would be nice. I'm going to turn it right over to Carmen.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, you have the final draft of the City of South Lyon Master Plan. I will note ahead of time that there are a couple of where dates have to be filled in. There are a couple of amendments that need to be made, obviously putting the current dates in. And then also on page three, the last paragraph that talks about the final presentation, not only the date, but that actually should say Planning Commission instead of City Council, because that's where the public hearing was held and the presentation was made, so, so obviously, the dates have to be put in there also. But as you can see, it's a pretty graphic master plan, and there's a real strong focus on the downtown, and also on Parks and Recreation, McCady Park, which Mark Russell actually did the conceptual plan that you have in that, that's in the master plan. So there were some subareas that were part of the master plan, and there's a real strong focus on those subareas. So this is going to translate itself into a new, into the new zoning ordinance and into a new zoning map. And I think it's, zoning is going to be the implementation of the vision that's created through here. But I think you can tell that there's been a real strong focus on sustaining the neighborhoods, maintaining the character of the current neighborhoods that we have, but also building upon the traditional character of downtown and introducing more traditional type buildings, also introducing housing in and around the downtown area, especially for empty nesters, things like townhouses, flats and the like, which there's a big demand for that out, it's everywhere. And I think that there's a real strong market to include that in the, in the redevelopment areas of the downtown. So I think it's a pretty visionary master plan. Another nice side benefit of the master plan is that LSL, who's, was the prime contractor on this, LSL actually created a 3D model. You see some of the images throughout the plan, but they've created a 3D model for the downtown area that can be called up at any point in time and be used to come up with other snapshots and images. So if there's a particular area that we're focusing on from a planning and design perspective, we can call that up and see what the plan calls for. It can also be used for marketing and the like. So there's some really cool aspects about the plan. We had a lot of, lot of input on this. We had real strong involvement from, obviously, the Planning Commission, and we even had one of the Planning Commissioners, who's an architect, Wayne Chubb sat in on our working sessions, the, the staff and consulting working sessions as we were putting this together. So there's real heavy Planning Commission involvement in developing the plan. So I think we're all pretty happy. We're, we're happy to finally have all the glitches out of the maps that we had, and we got that all straightened out with Oakland County. And I think everyone's pretty proud of the plan, and we're looking forward to being able to use it and put it into action now. That's the key. And I know Bob's gone through it also, Bob Donnie, and I know he's excited about it too, to be able to work with the downtown plan in there. So it's kind of a quick summary of it. If you have any specific questions, you've seen this before. It did go off for distribution. We got some minor comments throughout from Oakland County and from some others, but overall, it's pretty much the same document that you'd seen previously with minor changes.
I have a couple of questions. Okay. First, I just wanted to, I wasn't going to say anything, but I am going to say it. I should have said it earlier to Parks and Rec. Can I change my name on the document from Dedakis to my new last name? So...
Is it easier to spell, is it easier than my name?
It is. It's less ethnic, I feel like.
Yeah, sure, we'll make the...
It's Parisian, P-A-R-I-S-I-E-N. And Mr. Russell, are you still here? Hi, could we just change that too? I wasn't going to say anything, but...
Could you just spell it again?
Sure, it's P-A-R-I-S-I-E-N.
E-N?
Yes. Pretty sure it's the N, yes.
I'm okay.
Okay, so, thank you for that.
Congratulations.
Sorry, I should have, thank you. I should have said something sooner. I just did, I was debating whether to say something. I appreciate, well, first of all, all the hard work that you guys are putting into this. Parks and Rec included, yours was excellent too. Capturing the downtown feel of that old charm, I think, is really important. And I see that you put some houses from East Liberty Street, which is great. Shout out to East Liberty. But I just, I appreciate the downtown feel. I think capturing that is important, because South Lyon has that old charm, and I think we need to keep that, we need to preserve that in some way. Especially because you see, Birmingham's fantastic, I love Birmingham, but it's a lot more modern. And there's so many cities like that where there's just, it's the same building, it's the same architecture, it's very contemporary. We should keep and hold on to and preserve the charm that South Lyon has. So that's an excellent way you guys are handling that. I did have a question for you about elaborating on natural surveillance. Can you just give me a little bit more back? I tried to do some research on that, but what is natural surveillance?
What page are you referring to on that?
Oh, I just lost it. It was, it was about the safety of South Lyon and keeping it safe, which is fantastic, because we are...
I think, I think that what that term refers to is that when you have inactive downtown, you have more people walking around, and that creates an automatic surveillance in terms of, it creates added safety, because you've always got eyes on what's happening within the community.
Because when I was reading it, I was thinking landscaping, and I was like, is that what you're, when I read it, I was thinking landscaping for some reason. So I just wanted to touch base on like, what that was. So thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add too, I would be remiss if I didn't add also that Maggie was on the Planning Commission throughout the development of this and was heavily involved in it also. So I didn't mean to, to leave you out on that too. But, no, that, as, you know, all the Planning Commission members were, but, so I, I know that there's a lot of folks who had involvement with this and I think, and are proud of the way it's turned out.
Well done.
I've got a couple of comments here. If you could turn to page four, and maybe you could tell me where South Lyon Township is? I mean, you've been here a long time, I can't...
And you know what? We caught, we caught that over and over again at the Planning Commission level. So, yeah, I apologize.
That just cracks me up.
I will absolutely make sure that that gets, I know, and it bugs me when I hear people refer to Lyon Township as South Lyon or South Lyon Township.
Precisely, yeah.
But, yeah, I will make sure that that is corrected. Finally.
I really do appreciate all the effort that's gone into here. I have, I'm a little bit comforted by the fact, I've been railing on that stretch of North Lafayette on the west side since I walked through the doors here, getting involved in South Lyon. And you guys have a different vision than what I think is, is the most constructive and productive to go there. But I've been assured that it wouldn't preclude something different than what the actual drawing looks like from taking place, because I think that we're going to be, if we can get our game going and get downtown really starting to thrive and, and get the developers to understand that we have a very viable market with our neighbors growing as quickly as they are and with our own turnaround in town, that we can make this a very attractive and thriving downtown, more so than what it is now. And that expansion into those areas, I think, is going to end up being really, really helpful. And I did notice that your, the downtown residents that you were talking about, the enhancement of residents in town, you know, along that backside, I think that there's, there's enough room there to be able to try to coexist with, you know, thriving extension of the downtown. So, very, very well done. I'm, I'm really tickled that we're finally to the point of approving this too. So, thank you.
If I may. Yeah, I, I think this is very much needed. I mean, people have been campaigning about the downtown for 15 years and, still, still do. And one thing, it's, and it's just great to see all the little nuances that we can get towards is, like the, the rain gardens and the overhangs and the dual, I like the buildings that have the, the multi-level. It just reminds me of some other cities around here that are really booming. And, you know, we need to keep that old charm and, and what really makes South Lyon unique, but, and we can't, we don't want to be Novi or, or even Northville, but bringing some of those little aspects just to, to make it nice is, I think everybody would agree with that. One, just very small point is, you know, if you, I'm sure you're, most people are on Facebook, and the way, the way that rumors get started is just very easy. And if you look at, I mean, I read this, but if you look at page 56, it shows a picture of a sign of a Walmart. And again, I know you're just using the sign as the example, but if anybody was to read this, the first thing is they're going to say, this, they're going to think Walmart's coming to South Lyon. So I would suggest you take this picture out, even if you got to take out Walmart or something, I don't know, I just think it's bad, because we all heard the rumors about Planet Fitness and, I don't know, John, you can, whoever, throw them in, there've been multiple. So that was my only comment. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carmen, this is nice.
I think the only thing I'm going to say is, this has been, you know, Glenn and me have lived downtown for a long time. Mary moved downtown. Much of us spend time downtown. We understand how important this city of South Lyon is, just to put residents' minds at rest, because like you said, the rumors fly like crazy. If anybody wants the downtown to stay kind of looking very quaint and very historic, it's me. And I have a very, I have a stake in it. I live right down the street. And that's what drew me to this community. And long before I decided to run for mayor, I was asking about this. I think Lynn's probably tired of me asking, when's it going to be done? And you've done a tremendous job on this and answered many of the questions. There's a lot of things in here that were from that study from the Michigan State, Michigan, when they came in and did their studies on two ends, two schools that technically don't like to get along with each other, both did a pretty commendable job helping us out in the city. I love what I see. I think, Glenn, you're right, there's some pictures that I'm not really fond of, but I think those are just pictures. You come from the building industry, and those things sometimes get changed very quickly when they're just a concept. But my question is, how do we get this word out to everybody, once it's completely approved and out? I mean, very accessible. Our media's nonexistent now, seems like. And, you know, the, I just would like the word to be known, what's going on here. So develop, it's not just all on Bob up here. He's trying to do things as much as he can, and all of us, as much as we like to talk. But I'd definitely like to figure out a way to get this out somehow, so the people that can do the best good for the city of South Lyon understand what our, what our vision is. I know other communities do that too, but we're in competition with those other cities. I don't dislike Northville, I don't dis, I don't dislike Novi, because like, Novi's kind of a must, but I, I like Northville, I like Milford, I like Howell, I like bits[1753.26] Novi's kind of a must. But I, I like Northville. I like Milford. I like Howell. I like bits and pieces of all of it. And I want to be part of that, you know? And I want to get some of their business, too, you know? So I think we need to really, really promote this this time. Because I know the first time around, years ago, when the master plan got done, I really wasn't sure what that all meant. And I'm sure there's plenty of people out there that just thinks it's another document, lots of information to read and do this, you know? I mean, so I'd really like to do what we said we were going to do and push this very hard to try to get some people interested. And they are, obviously, starting to change. But I'm very happy with what I see. I'm glad it's where it's at right now. It's been a long time coming. It does take time. And to see where it's at now for that reason makes me feel better. So, good job.
Thank you.
John, one thing that, if I could add, was you mentioned, sometimes people look at it and push it aside. You know, and I just think of Lyon Township, and one of the things that you hear so often is if they followed their master plan. People say that all the time. So the point I'm trying to drive is that this really is supposed to be a tool that we use whenever we make a major decision to make sure that our decisions are consistent with this master plan. So it is very, very serious. And it's something that a lot of people take seriously, not just in Lyon Township, but everywhere. So, so when it comes time for, for example, the 390 Lafayette, when we're finally going to make a decision on that, we have to make sure it's consistent with the master plan. So that's something we need to stick to, and we shouldn't, we should not deviate as much as possible.
John, I have one more question. Carmen, on page 19, the old South Lyon IGA in Sweetwater, does that need to be updated? Or can it stay? I know that seems like a minor thing.
It may change.
It might change. Very true. Because I believe right now...
Yeah, we can now.
I don't, I mean, I don't know if it matters, but I'm just throwing it out there.
You can put a throwback, Squeery Louie's on there or something.
Grilled tomato.
The bum steer.
Griz and Gibby's.
I mean, we can go through the long list of names.
How far back? What was it? Was it one that was really successful? Gibby's? No, what was it?
Yeah, I think it was Gibby's.
I think that picture is indicative of how long this document has been in process, if nothing else.
I guess I don't know if it's important or if it matters, but just...
No, I have a comment.
Lock it out.
Your call.
Is there going to be a link on the website once it's up and running that'll tie to this? Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to comment. Thank you, Carmen, because I remember working on this with you, and you were fabulous to, to work with on this. And I can remember at the time laughing that this was an easy plan, master plan, put together because nothing had been done. So it was like working pretty much with a blank canvas, and we were able to sort of create, or you were able to create, and give a, a brand-new vision that, that really hasn't been around for decades. So this, this is a major, major, major step forward in, in the city, in city planning, which really hasn't been around for, for decades. So I think this is, this is good. I think the thing that I want to bring attention to is what I liked, and I can see where there's been changes on it, and kind of want to impress upon people, is the action plan. We spend a lot of time on action plans. And in order for this plan to really develop, you know, people are going to have to stick with these action plans and follow them through and do exactly what has been laid out in here, 216, 218, because this is how the city got into problems in the first place. They had something there, and then nobody followed through on it. Well, you know, I'm going to say, you have got to stay with this master plan and follow through exactly, this has been laid out by professionals, and stay with it year by year, exactly what they are asking you to do. The plan is there. And if you don't follow the plan, then we're going to end up where we've been for the past 30 years, you know, in dust bowl. But this is really, really a good document. It provides vision, a contemporary way of living in the downtown area. It provides economic activity. I think this is just a very, very, very good plan. And I have to commend the planning commission and everybody involved in, in putting this together, including those residents from the community that attended the meetings. It's, this is that important of a document. And if the city's going to move forward with the downtown or anything, they have got to get this plan approved, and we have got to follow the plan. Just follow this plan. It can't sit in a drawer anymore. So that's my advocacy on that issue.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the master plan.
Actually, it needs to be a motion to approve the resolution adopting.
Resolution? I was, I'm sorry. I apologize. Approve the adoption of the resolution, to approve the adoption of the resolution adopting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
This is the city master plan.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so excited about getting this approved that...
Too many plans tonight.
Yeah, I know. To adopt, approve a motion to approve resolution to adopt a new master plan.
I was sorry.
And my apologies for this quick slip-up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Thank you, Carmen.
Good job, everyone.
Now where the rubber hits the road. Consider approval, Phase 1, cost estimate for volunteer park improvements.
Do you guys have a copy of your document?
Yep.
No, they've got all the cost estimates. They don't...
Well, I'll be in part of the drawing.
They have a 11 by 17 in color.
So, this is a document that we have prepared for Phase 1. And just to recap, Phase 1 essentially is the east side of the park. The existing road into the park, about the Dixbrow's here, that Charles and Lucy was talking about a little bit, about paving that. So basically, it includes this, it includes a couple of comfort stations, and includes two baseball fields, as well as a bridge crossing the existing drain. Working with Bob Martin a little bit, well, a lot, actually, and Hubbell, Rothen Clark, assisted me considerably with the water service estimate, as well as the storm sewer estimate for the park. The electrical service was from, talking with Tony Hernandes, who is the service planner. And he was very helpful in providing that electrical service estimate to the park. None of the fields currently are being lighted. There was discussion about lighting. Some or all of the fields, but nothing has been confirmed at this point. Certainly, if we're fortunate enough to get, to go, move forward in Phase 1, we'll put the appropriate conduits in the ground to facilitate that need if, if necessary. What we also have done is worked with Laura, Laura Martin from the Metro Parks. And what we've done here, because sanitary sewer is so far away from this present park, that we've introduced composting toilets here in this park for, for at least the first two, or first phase, and the two comfort stations that you see here. And those costs are reflected in here with the assistance of Laura and her, her staff providing estimates for those, for those buildings. Those buildings haven't really been defined as to how big they are, if they're one stall or two stalls, you know, per gender. But we'll, we'll certainly get to that as we, as we move forward. As I said earlier, excuse me, as I said earlier, we really don't know what phase, the real number one, Phase 1 will be. The goal, I think, is to get as much of the, if we approach this project, I think, from a master planning standpoint, if you will, the bang for the buck is going to be in land mass and, and cut, cut and fill and land balancing. That's, you know, that, that can start to give us the fields that we can play on. Some of the more detailed elements, the, the under drainage and things like that, which, you know, a lot of people, you don't see it. It's necessary to make a field playable, certainly in inclement weather. But those things have to, we'll just have to work through those as, as we get closer to funding and closer to the grant applications.
I just had two questions. The, the comfort station, is that going to be water provided by the existing well that's there?
Yes.
You mean, you're talking about...
The well that you've got running the sprinklers for the existing fields in that?
Yeah, I don't believe it was. I thought we were talking about running a water main up there.
Did we?
I believe we were talking about running a water main.
Water main.
That's in the cost estimate.
Bring utilities out there.
Okay.
Ninety-nine percent.
So that, that wouldn't be included in the costs here? So...
No.
No, it is. It is included. The water service is included.
It is, okay.
Or hydrants and a water service.
Or hydrants and a water service.
Oh, yeah, I had seen those hydrants. Right, yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay. And what was the rationale for working from the east as opposed to off paved Eight Mile, working back?
I think we're closer to, certainly closer to services that are there. Some of the services that are in Eight Mile are in a different jurisdiction.
Mm-hmm.
So most of the services that we're providing in Phase 1 come from South Lyon.
Okay. Well, I mean, certainly the water would end up being more complicated than that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right.
It's also important to remember that paving Dixbrow from Eight Mile to Nine Mile is currently on the transportation improvement plan for 2019. So while this would be being constructed, we would also be seeing that road improved as well.
Sure.
Desmond pushed back one more year.
Yes.
Very cool.
All right.
Man, I lived long enough to see this actually get approved.
Right?
This has been a long time coming.
It has. And, you know, certainly the Parks and Rec Commission has been, you know, wonderful to work with in, on this plan and, and all the different groups that we have starting way back when with the Panthers. And, and I think that those groups are certainly, you know, are excited about it. It's just, it's going to be, it's going to be a beautiful asset for the community. And I'm not sure exactly how we serve, you know, our adjacent neighbors and other communities and all the programming and what have you, and operation costs and things of that nature. But it's, it's no small feat, that's for sure. And we know that the subsequent phases are going to be equally important. But I, I do know it's going to be most difficult to get public funding for recreation fields as opposed to walking paths. And, you know, everything wants to be accessible. We've provided accessible routes to either sides of the fields, which is important. The DNR looks favorably to those. But once we can, I mean, the sooner we can get into the wetlands and providing that path system through there and some sort of educational opportunities there, I think it'll bode well for us to gain, to secure additional fundings.
Mark, who is coordinating the fundraising efforts? Because I know a lot of the leagues, the youth leagues are looking at trying to get corporate donors right now to start throwing money into the pot. The question is, who's doing that?
I think Amy is.
I know what Amy Allen is.
Amy Allen. Amy Allen from Slara, yeah.
Okay. Because I know various, the various youth organizations, like I know Junior League has money. Panthers are...
Well, they're all excited about it. We went through a pretty good effort with those different groups. And everybody, you know, came to the table seriously. And, and everybody wants to participate as much as they can financially. You know, certainly in the maintenance of the facilities as well, that's going to be key. And that's going to save a lot of money and manpower and what have you from Bob's group.
I just want to make sure that we're not hitting the same corporate...
You know, quite honestly, I think that that's something that I need to ask Amy Allen about and maybe become a little bit more involved in that to kind of understand that. And it's not my, going to be my job to orchestrate the whole thing necessarily.
Right, right. That's my...
But I certainly want to work with, with Lynn and work with Amy and the Parks and Rec Commission as best we can to facilitate that.
Because I know, I mean, at least the organization I'm involved with, the Panthers, were just, we would like to start collecting money yesterday.
Yeah.
Donate to this project.
Well, I know that there's a real, there were some serious conversations, even after the last meeting we had here. I mean, we were approached in the hallway from somebody from Oakland County, really kind of encouraging us to contact them and start that process a little bit more aggressively. So there, there's some, there's some feelers out there. I just don't know how, how deep their pockets are right now.
If we start this project, if we prove the cost estimate and the fundraising becomes very active, when...
I knew you were going to say ass sometime.
No, no, no. Because, no, the only reason I'm saying this is we have a contract now that we have to decide on, I think on April 1st, for the farmer.
Actually, his contract has expired. And I do not believe he farmed this year based on looking at the fields, because it expired in 2015. So the contract is...
We have to put him on formal notice that we are not renewing?
Well, because the contract actually expired without any renewal. We don't have to notify him. That's not the way, there's no termination in the contract with the farmer.
I thought there was a written, we had to, I thought, we had to give notice by April 1st.
Only if we were going to do it during the term of the contract. But since the contract's expired, we don't have to. It's no longer...
I just want to make sure that, just remember, April 1st was the deadline. Okay.
The, the more nature area, you know, there, there's still a great deal of interest of people that, they don't want to be walking on a path. They want to just kind of cut their own path. Or, I'm just kind of curious for any improvements that take place in that. Like Autobahn Society, or, I mean, any of those kinds of people, are, are they very receptive to helping try to groom a more natural nature scenario?
Well, I think there, there was, I mean, again, the, the woman, and I can't recall her name, but that approached Amy and myself and some of the commission members after the last meeting we had, spoke to, you know, groups like that, the Autobahn Society and others. So I think that there's some, you know, there's some legwork to do, for sure. You know, we, we have to hit the ground running and, and be aggressive and, and, you know, as much as we can be with those agencies. But I'm not sure exactly at this point which ones those are.
Well, I, I just would hate to end up not, not trying to make some kind of an orchestrated campaign to, to get those improvements, because public funds won't go to them. I mean, unless you can get a vehicle or something, you know, wheelchair or some kind of a support system through those paths, then we're going to play, it's going to be very uphill trying to get any money from public.
Well, from a universal accessibility standpoint, which is really sort of that buzzword that the DNR really tries to push forward.
Sure.
You don't have to have all the pathways accessible. Really, it's like 20%.
Oh.
You know, if you, if you get into areas that are really impassable, then you have to provide signage and notification to that regard. But using crushed stone, like a, like a, even a infield mix for a ball field or decomposed granite, limestone screenings is what we've used in the past.
Where it can be traversed, yeah.
Yeah, it can be traversed, can be compacted. It gets a little greasy, you know, in the wet weathers. But again, with proper drainage and things, that helps that. But the, the DNR looks favorably to those surfaces.
I think for birders and stuff, though, things like that are tough, because then you're, you're walking on gravel and it makes noise and shoo the birds away, you know?
So there's, there's either the natural pathway, you know, like make your own kind of forager area. But there's also other, you know, mulch pathways and things like that. But a lot of that is just maintenance. And, you know, we have to be really cognizant of that and operation costs and...
Well, I'm glad to hear, though, that it's not completely precluded from being able to be funded as if you hit some benchmarks.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, you know, Amy's really good at that. And I think it's just, I'm sure that she's working very hard toward that end. It's just, I'm not been, been involved thus far in that process. And I don't know if Lynn, have you've been involved with what Amy has been?
No, but I'm very familiar with the DNR grants. And a lot of times also, you can get private foundation grants for walking trails that don't quite meet the accessibility standards, because they're trying to encourage people to be more active. But they don't hold the same state and federal guidelines.
You know, five years ago, I, or five years of my life, I did environmental, do environmental work, and I left and went on other things. But Glenn brings up a very valid point. But I also, it's a great opportunity with all this planning that's going on with, with the wetlands and the trails, Autobahn Society. But I mean, I'm thinking our high schools, you know, to get involved with some environmental learning and things like that, you know, to get cleanup, studying the eco environment and things of that nature as well. It's not all about the athletic portion of it. I think there's a great opportunity here now that we're putting this together to capture that group, too, because it's going to be very helpful for them, you know, to understand and to learn. And that's what we're trying to get people to do more now, you know, to embrace that, you know?
You know, equal to that, it's important to, you know, encourage the community, you know, to use the park. You don't have to be involved in a special interest group or, or baseball or soccer, you know, any of those special organizations. It's an opportunity to, for people to use the park passively. I think that really bodes well, you know, to what's been discussed in the master plan.
Well, I mean, what an augment in your own backyard. I mean, that's really cool.
Right.
Mike, if we have companies that rather than donating money would like to donate services, for, for example, you have a grading company that would say, hey, we would love to donate, you know, our services to be a part of this project, who would they contact? Or how would we organize that? Because I, I think we have some...
As we begin... As we begin the fundraising, those are what are called in-kind contributions. And those are things that the city will coordinate with Mark and with Amy as part of the overall fundraising. It ends up saving the city money, it ends up saving everybody money, and it looks very good when you do grant applications to have those kinds of in-kind matches.
I mean, that counts towards your match, towards the city's match.
So, work through Amy and Lynn.
Myself.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And then, last, God, I lost my train of thought now. If we approve this, the Phase One cost estimate tonight, the organizations, I mean, I, I can't stress this enough. I mean, I know the organizations want to start doing this tomorrow. Coordinate with Amy and Lynn?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's...
Because that's what I'm gonna tell them.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
And they've been, you know, those groups have been, have met every meeting, you know, and, and everybody's excited about it. And everybody talks money. But, you know, the rubber's hitting the road. So, now we've got to really get serious about it and get that momentum behind us.
Hey, I just remembered my train of thought. My apologies. When we, when the improvements were made at Volunteer Park, the, the two baseball fields and the two soccer fields, did the city do that? Or did we hire that out?
I can't be sure.
Oh, no, that wasn't...
I believe we hired it out because it was partially paid for by grants.
No, 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 Volunteer.
The current fields.
The two, the two baseball...
We hired it out.
Those were contracted.
Those were contracted. It was hired out.
Do we have any idea what that cost us back then?
The grant was a half million dollars. So, I would say at least a million, because we would have had to have at least a 50 percent match.
And the grant was through who?
DNR.
DNR?
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
So, the same thing with this one, I said about the master plan, is want to get the word out, people to see what's going on. At the interest that Mike was talking about, about people that want to get involved and want to hit the ground running right now. I mean, I think it's very, very important that everybody sees this, especially the people that want to get involved. Again, the media hasn't been here lately. So, I, I want to get that word out, that this is happening, like Glenn says, long time coming. Nice to see it. Great gonna be for the kids and everybody here in, in the schools. But we need everybody to see it.
Yeah, I think what, what I'll do is contact Lynn, and we'll get together with Amy and Erica Wilson and the commission, and start to put those feelers out and, and maybe even have a follow-up meeting with that committee that we had that helped generate this drawing.
Oh, I would highly recommend that.
Yeah, I think that's probably gonna come sooner rather than later.
Let's go.
I've, I've got friends in organizations, too. And I know that they're starting to talk about it. I know definitely. So, I think the money is, is gonna be there. I, I just think that unfortunately, we've been in this holding pattern. I, I, this came on when I went on, on the Park and Rec Commission, this is almost 20 years ago. So, you have, you have a lot of people in this community that have gone through parks and recs that, that have had this dream of this volunteer park, park getting developed. I mean, it's 20 years. So, for now, you're gonna have a whole new generation of young folk in the city that, that now have some aspirations and some hope, and some parents that are gonna be excited and talking. I, I'm telling you, they're already talking about this. I've already talked about this to a couple of people I know that are in organizations. And I think the money's gonna come sooner rather than later.
That's wonderful.
And I think, though, from the city's standpoint, it's gonna be a management issue.
Right.
Because I think, and, and maybe one of those all hands on deck kind of thing, I can see where the soccer organizations or whatever are going to have the money for their fields. But the money won't be there, I'm just making the argument, possibly to put in the road, possibly to put in the parking, possibly to put in the landscaping. So, I think at some point, the city needs to, you know, we need to look at that, that if we've got an organization that's coming in and willing to pop, you know, a couple of fields, then at some point, we need to help complete it so that there's the parking and the landscaping. Because what I'd hate to see is this park get developed and it looks, it looks spotty. You know, the, the places where the fam, the organizations have been able to build a field look great. But then, all the other amenities, like the trails and the landscaping and all the other stuff, just never got done, because the city didn't have the money.
Well, certainly, this, the, the committee stressed that equally. I mean, they want quality fields so that they can have tournaments, so that they can support the downtown businesses. So, the, we can have additional housing in the community, because we have good recreation facilities. I mean, it, it works hand in hand. And so, I think one can support the other. But we can't lose momentum.
But it's the coordination.
Most certainly.
Yeah, that's, that's an important thing.
That's most certainly.
And when money starts rolling in, where to keep it, where to put it, and what it's allocated for.
It, it is. And that, that's really gonna be key. And, and how far, what, what becomes of this drawing, you know, somebody has to develop the construction documents. You know, we can go to the DNR with a document like this, but you can't build the fields with, with this document. It has to be a good, strong set of drawings and specifications. And, you know, that all takes time as well. You know, we're not gonna probably make it this year in, on our April one deadline for our, for our grant application. But certainly, we can, if we can get private funding, we can certainly start something. I'm not sure exactly what that is. But, you know, I think more, as Mike said, organizing the, the contributors and, and organizing all the funding and all the other aspects to this, I think, is gonna be key in putting together that story.
Because this can either be a public relations, a great thing for the city, or it can be a public relations nightmare.
Right.
How, how the city handles this. And it very quickly can be a nightmare. Because I can, I can see these organizations raising the money and having that money sitting there for three years, and nothing's being done. And the parents are getting upset, and they're out there cranking every Saturday, raising, you know, knocking on doors and getting pop bottles and raising the money, thinking this is maybe the year this is. I'm just saying, you know, there's, there's gonna be a timing issue. And I think the city really needs some strong organizational planning skills on this, because this is either gonna be your best friend or your worst nightmare, this project. Because the parents that are involved in these sports are, are gonna be a little demanding. They're wonderful people, extremely dedicated to the sports, extremely dedicated to the community. And that's why we have what we have, because these are great parents that know how to push and get things done.
So, I, I've conveyed early on that I'm all in, in support of this. And whatever it takes, if there's pop bottles, fundraisers, you know, sign me up. I'm, I'm willing to help. And just putting this from a, a, I wanna say, personal level, but to reiterate how important this is, you know, my, my son is on the Panthers. And I speak to parents who, who kid, whose kids play, and they have two, sometimes three, and then you throw in cheer. And sometimes they have four children. And, and they're at Actionson Park, and then they're over, and they have, they may have one child over at Actionson, and the other one, all the way, the other side of town. And it's so difficult to coordinate, not only for the kids, but for the parents, to get from multiple locations. So, whatever can be done to get these fields in there is gonna be, is just gonna be terrific. But I did want to ask about, if this was mentioned, I apologize, but the, with the phases, I'm looking at the, the engineered, the, I'm sorry, excuse me, the, the fees and the total costs. And the grand total is 5,000, over $5 million, okay? And then we have, not included also, is gas and sanitary utilities. And there's about five or six things that are not on there. So, of course, these are gonna raise.
They'll bump it.
So, and, and the gas and sanitary is, is probably gonna be a major, I imagine, one of the major expenses as well. But I don't know the fees. But I guess my question is, of this 5.2 million, is it broken up by Phase One and Phase Two? Or would you be able to break that up and give us some sort of a...
This is Phase One.
This is just Phase One?
Correct.
Okay.
What I've described in the fields earlier.
Okay. And what about Phase Two? I mean...
Phase Two would be a, a separate cost estimate and a separate program.
So, we don't, we don't have that yet, just because we're looking at Phase?
That's correct. Yeah, that's what we, that's what our charge was in the initial contract you approved a while back, was to create this detailed cost estimate for Phase One.
That's fine. And, I mean, no, it's okay. I was gonna say, if you had any idea of even rough ballpark of Phase Two, I mean, if it's probably the same, or...
You know, I, I gotta believe this park is probably gonna be north of $10 million when it's all done.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Just in round numbers.
I'll make the motion, then, that we approve Phase One cost estimate for Volunteer Park improvements.
I'll support.
Okay.
A motion of support, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Way to be patient.
Consider approval for the Pint Size Marathon and related road closures.
I will turn this over to Chief Collins.
Yes, we have a representative from Footprints Fitness here to answer questions. But basically, the police department's on board with an event very similar to last year's Pint Size Marathon, which was very successful. And we would anticipate even more participation this year.
Just explain what that is.
I'm the director of Footprints Fitness. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) based here in South Lyon. This will be the third year we're doing this race. The funds that we generate from this race go directly to services in the school. Right now, we're providing yoga services to all the elementary schools at no cost to the school district. So, the funds that we get from the race directly go for that. Listening to all these improvements in the parks is great for us. We, we want to promote an active community the best we can and continue to grow. So, this race helps get our name out there more, but also gets people active. Families participate with their children. And we pair with Witches Hat Brewery, just to get a little extra participation from adults. So, it's been a success. It's been exactly what we've expected, but even more so. So, this year, we're going after bigger numbers. So, we appreciate the chief for helping us out with all the details and...
That's great.
Stephanie, I spoke to, I mean, obviously, I spoke to Ryan and Aaron, and they were just, they love how after the event, people even stick around and they go to Witches Hat. And it's just one more event that you're doing to support our local businesses in the city of South Lyon. So, it's just tremendous. So...
Yeah. And we anticipate, like, over the years, growing it to a bigger event where there's other activities going on.
I didn't make it last year, but I'm getting out of shape, so I think I may have to sign up.
That's her running game.
I think I was trying to convince Mary to run last time.
Yeah, I don't know what my excuse is.
Neither one could clear our schedules to do it. And I would have loved to run with the kids.
Get out there, April 29th.
All right, we're marking our calendars.
I like you guys a lot. I know Thad and, you know, and the whole organization. And I think it's great having to get the kids out there and getting them involved, and especially bringing some of the parents out that need to get involved also. And if it's anything like last year's event, which I think it's gonna be much better, I was surprised last year how fast it blew up.
Yeah, the first year, we sold the race out twice. And we've anticipated that, kept our numbers down intentionally in this year. We're just gonna go, go big.
So, the same thing last year, do we, who do we contact for, for just Pint Size Fitness? For anybody that wants to contribute or anybody that wants to donate?
Yep. The website will link you, pintsize marathon dot com will link us right to our website.
Perfect.
And Stephanie, I do have another question. Is there anything that you're looking at where you could use more help from the city? Let's say expanded roads. I'm not talking this year, because we have to vote on what's in front of us. But, you know, let's say next year, more roads closed, bigger...
We've considered it. We've gone back and forth with the roads. That's why we're staying a little bit small.
Okay.
Continuing to stay in the city of South Lyon is a goal. But to grow any more than we will this year, it's gonna be questionable if we need to extend out to possibly Lyon Township, just to get more. Crossing all the major routes, like, we've gone back and forth so many different times to see what we can do. Closing Pontiac Trail is never gonna be a great option. So, we're doing the best we can. We can consider other options with the high school land, things like that.
Stephanie, do you happen to know your numbers? So, how much growth have you had each year? You might have already said this.
We, when we decided to do the race, we were like, hey, maybe 150 people do this. And the first year, we sold out the last minute to like 278.
Nice. Very cool.
So, we raised our numbers the next year up almost to 400. And we got really close to that, too. So...
Well, now that I've been called out, I'll have to mark my calendar for sure.
Yeah. It's, it's turned out to be the second biggest race in town, the Witches Hat 5K. It's been around for 25 years, and we're coming close to the numbers that they get for that race.
I've talked to Thad quite extensively and seen pictures and, you know, how passionate he is about the yoga and the grade schools and everything. And I think that's tremendous, that they're getting that opportunity to experience that, because most of them probably would never know what that even is, other than what they see. And so, your group is doing a great service, besides getting people healthy and, and...
Continue to do that.
I'm really glad. And this year, maybe we'll, maybe we'll run some more out. We'll drag Joe.
So, I'll make, yeah. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the closure of Dorothy Street between Pontiac Trail and McMunn. McMunn between Dorothy and McCady. McCady between McMunn and Washington. Washington between McCady and the rail trail on April 29th, 2017, between 11:30 a.m. and 2 p.m. And to approve use of the Witches Hat Depot, McCady Park, and rail trail for the Pint Size Marathon. Thank you, Stephanie.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Consider approval of the auction sale of the Water Department out-of-service vehicle.
I will turn this one over to Bob.
Thank you. We've done this in the past. This is how the city completes their inventory of older vehicles. There's many junkyards that would happily take our vehicles for rock bottom price. But we've been using the MITN, which is the Michigan Intergovernmental Trading Network, for probably five or six years. You know, Lloyd's Department has used it in the past. And we've had a lot of success with it. So, I'm requesting council permission to use this, to approve the sale of the vehicle and to start auction at five, at $100. We add 5 percent for any clerical fees on top of that. And once we get this going, we usually put it out there on the network for about three to four weeks. With winter coming, I will, hopefully, we can get this done before the snow falls.
I'll make the motion to approve the sale of the following vehicle, a 2002 Dodge Dakota, with the VIN number as described in the agenda note.
I'll support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll have two other vehicles coming up in the not-too-distant future also. There's one that's sitting out in the parking lot here that'll probably be up pretty quick.
Are you gonna get one of those things, you put the fan under it?
Yeah.
Consider approval of purchase of the department head vehicle.
Okay. We've talked about this for quite a few years. This year, we actually put money in the budget. It's 100 percent funded through the Enterprise Fund, which is the Water and Wastewater Department. But the vehicle will be used not only by me as a department head vehicle, but it can be shared with Water, Wastewater, EPW, any workers going to seminars, educational classes, and in fact, anybody in the city who's going somewhere that needs a dependable vehicle, it will take them to that location. As you probably know, in the past, the city has always gone out and purchased new vehicles. But with the amount of money we set aside for this year's budget, we started looking at used vehicles. And we felt that we could get a much better vehicle used that would cost quite a bit more than the money that was budgeted for. And if we really searched out, maybe we could find a really nice vehicle. Well, we have done that. And varsity Ford has worked very closely with us. And they've kept an eye open, and they contacted us that they have a 2014 Ford, four-by-four Escape with 6,000 miles on it. It's in perfect shape. We'll get the extension of the...
Warranty.
Warranty, thank you. And the price of this will be $20,114. I put $22,000 in the budget. That's split between Water and Wastewater Department, $11,000 in each department. And as I say, it can be used citywide. But I think this, if you've taken a look at the vehicle I drive, I haven't been driving, I've been driving my own truck, because Explorer right now is in need for about $3,000 of repair for a new transmission.
Pretty tired.
Hey, Joe.
And I think you can see, my vehicle's always up at city hall, my own truck, so...
Oh, yeah.
Bob, I have a couple of comments. So, and I'll make it brief. I know it's getting late. We have the pictures here in the packet, and it's all rusted out. And it's, the current vehicle is just, let's say, it's kind of junky, right? I mean, that's what it is. So...
We've gotten that from Lloyd. We get hand-me-downs through the department. And they've been wonderful.
You, you need a new vehicle. I, I get it. So, the thing I like, and I've always been stressing for quite some time, is sometimes you need to run things like a business, especially government. And the business aspect that you're taking here is that you're not buying... government. And the business aspect that you're taking here is that you're not buying a new, brand-new car, which is okay to do sometimes, but 2014, 6,000 miles, that's prime depreciation dropped off. That's very prime. So lightly used, it's going to last us eternity, hopefully.
Oh, yes.
Till you retire 20 years from now, right, Bob? So.
We stored in the garage at night, and I think it'll be.
He didn't. So, but that's okay. I tried to make a joke there, but went over the head. That's fine. But no, I think this is great. And, you know, I look at, I thought about this a little more, and I don't know if this probably wasn't going to come out if I said it, but all department heads have their own vehicles, you know, and if I'm correct, I don't think I'm missing anybody, except for Glenn gets a car allowance. Chief has a car.
Lisa.
Yeah. Lisa doesn't, Lisa, you're going to become a next, I guess, so.
She gets the Explorer.
But anyhow, it's, Chief Kennedy has his truck. We see it all over town flying, saving lives. So I think this is time for you.
And we'll mark it up with a nice symbol on it and, you know.
Yep. So I'll let somebody else make the motion, but 100% for it.
Bob, the only thing is, after the meeting, could you show me, because I'm looking for the line item numbers, the 592 to 556. You know, if you could just show me after the meeting, I brought the budget with me. If you could show it to me where it is.
Yep.
And once again, I want to thank you for putting in here that this is a budgeted item.
Oh, yeah. We would never bring an item like this to the table, Maggie, if it wasn't budgeted.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I thank you for that.
For an emergency.
Yeah.
Want to thank you for that, Bob.
Thank you.
Today, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2014 Ford four-by-four SC Escape from Varsity Ford.
All support.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. My conflict of interest.
Well, since I added, can I, can I start?
Let me add this. Hold on before everybody gets their dandery from here.
Sure.
This is a discuss Pullum Windows discussion, and with a conflict of interest with Councilman Kivell that was brought to put to the table tonight, and it's just a discussion.
Yep, okay. So with that, I think I'd like to give Glenn the same respect that I gave Maggie earlier, if he would just, if he wants to say anything, or if we just go right into the discussion.
Yeah. Actually, when the item was brought up, that PD needed new windows, I thought, well, I know how old the building is. It didn't seem like a stretch to imagine that it needed new windows. And that was the end of what I knew about the whole project until Chris Sovick had, I don't remember if it was Lloyd or Chris, that had come and made the pitch to council about what the bid packages were. And so when I happened to notice that Pullum Windows had stepped up and made a very competitive bid, winning the low bid of the project, I thought, well, I was really proud of the guy that owns the place, that he had an interest in trying to help out his community, the community that they've been, I mean, since the '60s, I guess, that they've been there. That was the extent of it. I have no, no interest financially in there. I build windows. I don't get any extra bump from, from doing any of this, or from them being the ones that had won the low bid. But I, after the bid was achieved, Charlie did come up to me in the shop, and he had said he wasn't quite certain that Chris really understood exactly what was going on with the windows. At that time, the windows were going to be, they sell a number of different manufacturers' windows there, and it was going to end up being a commercial line window. And Charlie wasn't quite certain that he wanted to go that route if they were amenable to the idea of us, we make a very high-end window that's put in mansions and stuff. And he thought that he'd like to pitch to Chris to make our windows for that building and trim them in oak for the interior. I had mentioned to Charlie, I thought that was a really cool idea, but I didn't know that anyone would ever realize that they were oak windows, because they would close the blinds in PD, and as long as their papers weren't being blown off of their desk from a big wind, it probably, that would be the last that they paid any attention to the windows. But he was adamant about trying to pursue that, and I commended him for reaching out to the community and providing this community outreach project. So when it came up to the time for the bid to be approved, it never really crossed my mind. I have no financial interest. I have no benefit from the approval of the low bid, and I didn't really think twice about it. Clearly, it would have been in my best interest and council's best interest, had I recognized that, just to eliminate the potential perception of a conflict of interest. For that, I apologize, and that's where we are, so.
Well, I had this added, because this is, this is actually really serious. It's not, it's just as simple as an oversight. And I just, I'm going to say a few things, and actually, I have some other notes I want to come back to, but I think this is going to be a larger discussion. So I'm going to make a few comments that are related, actually from earlier, but are related, pertinent to discussion, and I have actually some more things I want to, I wanted to talk about as well. But basically, I want to start off by saying, we all sit here, and I like to say that most of us really care, that we care about the city and we care about the residents. But the truth is, as elected officials, some people, and everyone really puts on their best face, okay? And I'm going to bear my soul a little bit. I'm sorry if I'm getting a little emotional here, but I'm going to bear my soul a little bit and tell you that behind the scenes, unfortunately, not everybody is so nice on this council, and sometimes it gets ugly. And coming back to the earlier topic of conflict of interest that we had with Councilmember Kurzweil, I don't think that our city attorney actually conveyed the tone of his letter to Councilman, Councilmember Kurzweil equitably. And I was actually quite offended by the letter that we received. And additionally, and sorry, John, I was trying to speak, but then I felt as if I was being cut off. I don't want to put you on the defensive, but that was my, how I really felt, was I wanted to try and jump in and say that I don't think this was being really conveyed the way it should have been. And additionally, on multiple occasions, I've seen Attorney Wilhelm show bias against council members, including myself. So not everything's rainbows and sunshine here that people maybe want to make it to be. And I believe Attorney Wilhelm's bias will come out more when discussing this conflict, which I think we're going to get into some more, and I have a lot of comments, and I'll touch upon it. But before moving forward, I just want to convey that there's more that meets the eye as to how council members are treated. And actually, I commend Councilmember Kurzweil for disclosing her conflict the correct, excuse me, the correct way. Now regarding Councilmember Kivell's conflict, this is a serious topic, and, you know, one of the things that we were told, and this comes from our city attorney, is that his employment at Pullum was a clear conflict of interest, as it would tend to impair his independence of judgment as a council member. His failure to disclose his employment relationship with a bidder for contracts with the city and voting to approve them was improper and contrary to the city's code of ethics. Now, in fairness, I want to open this up to other people, because I want to peel back the onion a little bit, because the timing of when we were disclosed all of this, the timing of treatment of myself, which I'll get into, all comes into play in the bigger picture. So with that being said, if there's anybody else that wants to speak, please do so. I have many more comments to say.
I want to say one thing, and it's in regards to overall, the general tone of what this is. You said right, it's not all sunshine. And I think we all saw all knew that coming, and that was the way it was going to be. But that being said, being mean to people and being rude all the way across the board is very unacceptable by, in my mind, doesn't matter who it comes from. You should treat people how you want to be treated, disagree to disagree, and that should be the end of it. Opinions are opinions. You don't have to come back and forth and tell the other person their opinions are wrong or right. We're here to discuss that in a very businesslike manner. I think at times, we haven't done that. I've stayed very quiet and stayed out of the discussions about it in most cases. I allowed Maggie tonight to state her case. I think she was, she did exclude herself last time, but at least give her opinion of what was going on. And the same thing with Mr. Kivell. I'm going to do, I am going to say one thing. When I was on council many, many years ago, and this is very pertinent, I was new to the, I was new to the political game, and things happen. Sometimes you got to be on your guard, I guess. You got to be paying attention. You got to look at what's going on and what's coming from the side door, because everybody doesn't have the same intent all the time. And very, very many things are done very innocently. Things happen by accident, and you have to look at them that way, too. And you can't let personal things that happened in the past or may be happening now get in the way of making decisions that are, that are right because you're angry or they're angry. It has to be based on what's real. When I was on council many years ago, first time around, there was something going on in the city. Someone did some work on my truck, and come to find out, they were doing something with the city. I had no idea they were. And opened up my packet, there it was, right in front of me, and I was like, are you kidding me? And it's like, that's how fast and how simple something can happen. Well, if you don't acknowledge it, don't say something, you know, people get their hair up in a bunch, and everybody thinks the worst right away, both sides. And I called the city manager and just told him what was going on. And the story was okay. It doesn't always happen like that. You know, I, my line of integrity's pretty high, and sometimes people think I'm nuts because of it, but I think differently than a lot of other people. And it doesn't make me better than everybody else, but I think about those things. But sometimes, things happen that aren't part of the deal, you know, and you just don't understand how it got there, but it did. And I think we need to, you know, pay attention to what's the real issues and not what's personally bothering us, because if that's the case, I have a lot to say. And I, up to this point, I have not. And I'm not going to, because that's not how I'm wired. If other people want to do that, that's okay. That's the way they're, that's the way they are. But I wanted to get that out and say that, because I think this gets going too much, where people are personally attacking people back and forth. We have to keep it business. At times, it's great. At times, it's pretty dang cloudy and lightning. And I'm not going to say who it is, because we've all contributed to it. And I, and I think that's time to stop that stuff. And we've got a lot of good that's going on here in this side-door activity, sidetracks, just things that are just taking our minds off of what we're supposed to be doing, just keep happening. And I sure as heck in the corporate world wouldn't be talking like this. In the political side, we have to do things differently. And part of the reason why I've been a little more quiet and tried to be a little more stable, opposed to how things get done. So there's going to be disagreements. We have a very strong body of people up here, three attorneys, fourth one over here, a few of us others that are doing other things, that have been in the business world, doing all kinds of, people don't know what we've done. And we're going to clash at times, and we're trying to make changes, and we're trying to bring things together. And sometimes, things happen. We're all trying to make a living also, whether it's a lawyer, or whether it's somebody that's working in a shop building windows. So that's my personal statement, and we can move on to whoever else wants to.
In the last, between the last council meeting and this meeting, we've been, two conflicts have been disclosed to the council. The difference between Maggie's conflict and Glenn's conflict is that Maggie disclosed her conflict. Although we may disagree on how to handle the conflict, the conflict was disclosed. I gotta be honest, I didn't know about Glenn's conflict. And that kind of bothers me, because in our field, if you have a conflict of interest, you need to disclose it. I mean, we're elected officials. We're bidding on contracts. It could have been as simple, hey, I, I worked, you know, I worked for the company just to prevent a conflict of interest. I'm not going to vote on that. And quite frankly, the difference between Maggie's situation and Glenn's is Maggie did disclose her conflict. So I'm kind of bothered that the conflict wasn't disclosed. What to do about it? I don't know, but I really think it needs to be discussed, because I do have issues bidding on contacts, on our contracts, where I really don't know if there's a financial interest or not. I don't know what, what happened. Granted, it's a local company, and I'm glad the contract went to a local company, but again, we had a vote, and everybody voted for it. And I just have an issue with it not being disclosed.
My comments reach several areas. I manage conflicts of interest professionally. So I kind of have some insight into conflicts of interest, conflict management. And frankly, I'm not going to permit this council to control my career or my reputation in this community. So that is why I took the steps to manage this conflict that I had with, with a individual, because I have a history with this council. And I'm not going to permit anyone on this council to do anything that I feel may jeopardize my reputation in this community. So I took the extra-conservative abundance of caution approach in ensuring that nobody can ever come back and say, well, there was an issue here with the conflict of interest. No offense, but this council I don't trust to protect my reputation. What, what, what I find interesting about this conflict of interest, and to talk about it in a business sense, is that conflicts of interest, if you know that they exist, you, you do exactly what I said you do. You raise your hand, you raise the red flag, even if you don't know if you have a conflict of interest. Because the whole key here on conflicts of interest, as Mike sort of alluded to, is that you don't get to the deliberative process when you know there's a pretty, and this is a pretty serious conflict of interest. You don't get to the deliberative process. And, and I just don't know if I buy Mr. Kivell's innocence in that he kind of didn't know. Because I can recall the incidences, and permit me, please, to lay some foundation here, with respect to Mr. Kivell's role in bringing to the attention of the city of Mayor Wallace's conflict of interest issue with the Cable Commission. So I look at this, and I say, here is somebody who is fairly sophisticated in understanding conflicts of interest. He's raised conflicts of interest before with other members of council, but yet, when it came to his own conflict of interest, somehow, he, he wasn't able to put things together. I, I think this is a very blatant conflict of interest. When you look at the codes and the ethic ordinances that are involved, this is pretty clear. And, and the reason this is clear, and the reason this is serious, is because you now have criminal consequences, because this is, these are misdemeanors for violating the charter for doing whatever. So these are additional issues that council is going to have to discuss, and I don't know if Mr. Kivell wants to take the fifth or what, because you don't know where this is going to go. And so you got to be careful with handling the information. I'm not his attorney, but I think if I were him right now, if I knew I violated something with a criminal consequence, thank you for explaining your innocence, of which you think you're innocent for, but there's consequences, the criminal side of it. Additionally, I find it, I find it disturbing that, that the contracts were voted on on August 8th, and it wasn't until Friday, August 18th, no, Friday, November 18th, that this issue even came about. So there was this period of time, almost four months, where somebody who clearly had the ability to analyze a conflict issue, because he had done it before, very, very vocally, very visually, on those tapes with Mayor Wallace, but yet, it didn't apply to him. So I, I'm struggling with that issue as to why it took four months. So I, I'm struggling with that issue as to why it took four months. And, and quite frankly, I, I'm gonna be, I mean, I can only be as honest as I can. Is that I doubt whether this conflict of interest would have even, even come to light if I had not made the phone call to the city attorney on Friday, uh, November eighteenth. It still would have gone undetected. Because clearly, there was no initiative being done by the holder of the conflict of interest to come forward and say, you know what? You know, maybe I made a mistake, guys. And particularly when I was at that council meeting, you know, and, and said, hey, I got a conflict of interest. Even though I didn't have it yet, I at least put council on notice, hey, guys, I can't go forward with talking about this. And you had the economic development director at prior meetings, maybe two meetings ago or three meetings ago, talking about Pullum. And I just don't know what it was gonna take to trigger the holder of the conflict of interest to say, you know, maybe I oughta be thinking about this. Maybe I better disclose this. Maybe, I mean, I don't know, I don't know that process. What I am bothered by is, is what I said. This conflict of interest, in my mind, would never have been disclosed to this council unless um, I had talked with the city attorney on Friday, November eighteenth. And, and that brings me to another issue. Um, which is a little bit bothersome, Tim. Very bothersome for me. Is we have this conversation on Friday, um, November twenty-first. And, and we, and I raised this issue, cause I had heard, I, actually, I, I received something and, and so I followed up on it. And your response in that conversation was, yeah, I heard that too. And, and the way to resolve it is to rescind the vote. I, 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 I gotta tell you, Tim, I, I was shocked. I, I was shocked. And, and let me tell you why I was shocked and you will have an opportunity to explain. Uh, once again, I'm just being very objective. I'm saying to myself, okay, why is it, why, why? I call and I say, this is what I learned. I don't know if it's true or not. And I did inquire and somebody told me, no, I don't know if he works there. I never called Pullum to find out. I, I just figured, well, okay, it's just somebody's mouthing off about something. But then you also heard it. And, and you immediately knew how to handle it. So I'm now saying, wait a minute. What's going on here? Why, you, you, you know, you write in your letter, Tim, and, and I, I gotta hand you some compliments. I don't do that very often. But what we learned from the board of review issue is that you need to, this was a public meeting. And the first thing you did correct on this, Tim, which you learned, I didn't learn anything from board of review, quite frankly. I knew where I was going and I knew the changes that needed to be made. I, I'm a tough kid. But what you learned was, this was an open meeting in when, in, in which this happened. So your letter did not say attorney-client confidential. It couldn't, Tim, because it all happened in an open meeting. That was the first compliment I wanna make sure I give you. Is that I think there's been a process now where you have learned that some things that happen in an open meeting aren't necessarily titled for attorney-client confidentiality. So I wanna thank you for that. Number two, I think what you learned from the board of review proceedings on this matter is that the reason I went to, and I have to commend John tonight for allowing this on the agenda. Because when board of review was first brought up, I wasn't permitted to put board of review on the agenda, to sit here and have a discussion with council about an issue that pertained to public trust and had potential criminal consequences. But tonight, you have learned, all of you on this council have learned. You don't deny somebody an opportunity to discuss something that occurred in an open meeting and pertains to public trust. So I wanna commend John for not denying an opportunity to put this on the agenda and get this out in the open. That tells me the learning process has begun. And we are beginning to make the transition from where we were in January, amateurs in some aspects, to becoming more professional at how some of these issues are being handled. Which you also did, Tim, and I wanna thank you for, is that when you are dealing with conflicts of interest, this is how we professionally handle them. This is how I professionally provide advice to corporate clients that are dealing with conflicts of interest. Is that when a conflict of interest arises and it deals with money, in this case with public trust, you put the chief of police on copy to that conflict of interest issue. Or that issue that raises the issue or the matter pertaining to funds. And I wanna commend you, Tim, because on this letter, the learning process has started. You obviously recognized that something was afoot. It didn't fit right, didn't sound right. And you put the chief of police on the letter. And I wanna commend you for that. Cause that's a big step. You would not have done that last January. But now you're doing it. And I would advise you that on all conflicts of interest that involve money, public funds in the city, the chief of police has to go on that letter. So I think some of the formalities and the mechanics of processing this conflict of interest for me, I'm seeing a learning process on you and council in terms of rationally talking about this and working through um, the issues that clearly we have. But I am bothered by the fact that uh, you did have some, a hunch. And, and I clearly, whatever hunch you had about this conflict of interest, you didn't act on it. And it wasn't acted on until I made that phone call on Friday. There was no, no indication from anybody that this was even, even on somebody's radar. And then the other issue a little bit, Tim, is when you sent me the email on Monday, November twenty-first. And in that, you say, you know, I spoke with um, Mr. Kivell. Um, I, and he confirmed he was employed by Pullum at the time the window contracts came before council. Wow. I, I, wow, wow, Tim. I mean, I, 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 I saw that and I said, wow. A, a simple two-second question. If you, if you had a hunch, you know, it's just two seconds. Hey, Glenn, you know.
I don't understand what you're criticizing.
But, but that's okay. I'm just telling you why I have some problems with, with all of this.
What are you saying? I don't have any idea what you're critical of.
Endlessly saying, yeah.
You, you, when I spoke with you on-
First of all, you're, you're taking a conversation that we had by telephone out of context.
But you said you heard that too.
There, it was an initial discussion. I've done further research. As an attorney, have you ever developed more facts than you initially had?
But you said-
Possibly change your mind? Do some research, look at the, the ordinance, look at the charter? That's what's happened here.
No, that's not, that's not what happened, Tim. That, that's not even what happened.
Well, then tell me what it is.
I, I, I'm trying to tell you. And when I called you on Friday and talked to you and we were working through some of the issues on my conflict of interest. And I said, oh, by the way, I heard that Glenn Kivell worked at Pullum when he voted on some um, business, uh, some business for the city. Your immediate response was, I heard that too.
I hear a lot of things as the city attorney.
Why didn't you, why didn't you just ask the man?
I, I didn't, honestly, I didn't put any of that together as far as when I'd heard anything about Mr. Kivell's employment or the window contract. I didn't have any context on the dates, the timing or any of it.
But all you-
Thank you for bringing it to my attention. It's been dealt with. I don't understand your being critical of this issue.
Well, I, look, if we're gonna be honest, I-
It's a course of seven days between when you alerted me to it and I issued a letter to council about it.
Well, and that's the other thing. Because by Monday, November twenty-first, you clearly had spoken to Mr. Kivell. You clearly knew now that at least Mr. Kivell felt there was a conflict of interest. But council was not given an opportunity. You, you made no communication with council.
So I wasn't quick enough?
Well, you already knew.
Is that, is that the critique? I didn't get it out the door quick enough?
He sent us a letter.
During the Ohio State-
It was over a holiday.
During the Ohio State.
I dealt with this over my Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay.
I'm working as quickly as I can, within the parameters that I have to work within to deal with the city business. I'm not biased toward any of the council members. I represent the city's interests. I don't represent individual council members.
Okay, so-
I'm offended by the allegation
Well, don't be offended.
That I'm somehow biased in favor or against any of the council members. I deal with you all on a professional basis and I try to give the best advice that I can.
I would disagree, Tim.
Yeah, I would disagree, Tim.
I know you disagree.
No, I don't. Because you know what? No, if we're gonna have this whole discussion about the conflict, did you send any email to any council members saying that you had a conflict, potential conflict?
I didn't have it until I went to the city attorney.
Yeah, you sent an email to the city attorney, but you didn't disclose it to us. The only reason we knew about your conflict is because the city attorney forwarded it to us.
Right, but things were being worked out, Mike.
Yeah, but see, on your time, on your time schedule, it's being worked out for you. But you're criticizing our city attorney for not getting this to us within seven days.
Well, Mike, you've got your, your, your friends-
No, you're crazy.
No, I'm not, Mike.
You are.
And you're just taking the time to look at the stuff. Look at the lead, look at-
Mike, you're mentally ill.
Oh, I am.
How you can sit here and be critical of the timing of that particular issue?
We're dealing with Glenn.
Okay.
And now this is all about you again.
No, it's not, it's not about me.
Yeah, it isn't?
No, it's not.
Okay, you surprised me. My God, let's deal with Glenn.
Can I keep doing this for a second? Hold on.
It's unbelievable.
I have to agree a little bit here. This started out where this was gonna be a discussion about the Pullum window. And then again, it's morphed into something much grander and somebody else's-
That's cause there's more to the story. There's more to the story.
God, you have a novel in front of you.
I do, I do.
Hold on, everybody, hold on. We'll just end this now.
So, so-
Hold on.
Okay.
This is the kinda stuff that I'm, I'm telling you. This has got to stop.
It's unbelievable.
Mike, Mike, same thing though right now. All of us, we gotta stop contributing to this. And this is a bigger problem that I've watched. I've watched this from the, as, sitting here. I've watched it from the comments from people. I've watched it from our council people. There's, I don't know what you do, Lynn, but we have to have a sit down with a few people here and have to discuss something before this, this, this being out and this being in public all the time with us arguing has got to stop.
It's embarrassing.
You know, I mean, we can, we can disagree. I mean, we can absolutely disagree with things on context. And I, and I don't disagree that anybody's not bringing something to the table here that's ver- that's very valid at times and most, and we've done a lot of good here. But holy crap, it's like going and getting a root canal.
I know, you wrote a novel.
And Mike, hold it. Everybody needs, everybody needs to take a breath. You know, when I've said, when I've said a long ti- I mean, I'm not holier than thou. But man, my integrity line is a heck of a lot stronger than some bunch of you guys. Because you treat each other pretty badly. And if, if my wa- I don't tell my wife what goes on at these meetings. She don't come, but she knows when I get home at eleven-thirty at night and I'm probably not in a very good mood. And there's a lot of reasons for that. And I have never dealt with this kind of, I've never dealt with this kinda stuff in the corporate world very often. You know, and, and I've argued with people and I've had disagreements with people and contracts haven't gone a certain way. But we've given people respect at least, unless somebody made it personal. This has been personal since this thing started.
Yep.
And it's really time to stop it. I don't understand. I mean, you sit back and you try to do the right thing. You try to say the right things. And, and people are constantly ridiculing you and constantly behind the scenes and making statements and pulling things out of the air and, and it's a mess. And I chose in the beginning to be vocal. I stopped because it wasn't getting me anywhere. And I thought maybe everybody would understand that by watching that, they might learn from it. And it's obviously that hasn't happened. I'm not saying anybody doesn't know what they're talking about. But boy, the method of delivery is, boy, needs some work. And uh, I'm not a lawyer. I'm sure as hell glad I'm not. I give you guys a lot of credit for doing this every day of your life. Because that's why we hire you guys to do the stuff that we don't wanna do. Because I wouldn't do it. I would probably lose it. You know, I mean, so this going on around me is driving me nuts. I think we take things and we blow them into some big explosion. And most of it shouldn't go there.
This is a big deal though, John.
It's not a bigger deal as you guys are making it out to be. Hold on a second, hold on a second. I have listened to you guys complain and argue since, since November. And I've, and I've let it go on and let it go on. And I've sent emails out trying to be friendly, trying to acknowledge things. Some of my emails turn out being stupid. I agree. So I stopped. When you're trying to do the right thing and there's certain people that don't want to be part of the team, really is a problem. It happens in sports every day where the best athlete on the team, no one wants him on the team because he's a cancer in the locker room. Some of those guys are no longer around. They may be the best people around. Same people in business, people are very, very smart. But man, if you chew everybody out and yell at everybody and throw things at people and just call everybody that they're stupid and all kinds of stuff. I mean, I don't under- I don't know where this is gonna keep going, if it's, it's just gonna keep going. And somebody's gotta say something. And I've sat here and listened and listened and listened and nobody's saying anything. All we do is argue. And there's a lot of good stuff going on behind the scenes, but we're constantly having to fan the fire because of all of that stuff. When we all ran, part of the reason why we ran is because we got tired of watching that. Now we're part of it. And I, I'm extremely disappointed in this whole thing because of it. And I'm glad things are getting done, but man, this has been an experience for me to take and learn on how to treat people and how to move on in my life and how to, how, helping some of my kids. And hopefully, some of these students are here tonight to see what's right and see what's wrong. I think they'll, they'll, they'll understand that themselves. That's the reason why they're in that class or in AP government. They're a little bright. And a lot of them have admirations of wanting to be in student council higher up at college maybe or moving on to the government somewhere. And they're getting a rude awakening of what this is really like. And coming from the corporate side and the business side, I'm the first one to say, I'm sure learning a lesson.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I've worked for this city for thirty-nine years. I overlook seventeen guys. They watch this. I deal with my guys on a daily basis, a weekly basis, because they comment about what is going on. And you know who they look for direction to?
It's nuts.
I wonder after thirty-eight years, at sixty-three years of old, if I have to sit in here at these meetings at this time of night and listen to infighting when it has nothing to do with the performance that I try to give you people as a department head to the water and wastewater department and DPW. My guys care so deeply about this city and what we do. And then this goes on? It makes me wanna, it makes me wanna put my coat on and walk out this door.
We should be ashamed. You're totally right. We should be ashamed.
Can I continue? So the issue that I had basically was just trying to understand why there was this delay when it was very, very clear that this was an obvious conflict of interest. I mean, it wasn't like, uh, I guess I can give an example. It's not like, it, it's, uh, the example would be, it's not like somebody sat here and approved something in a budget. Let's say dry cleaning costs for the fire in the police department. And let's say that I was the person, the council member that approved the budget. And um, and I also worked at the dry cleaners. But I didn't work at the dry cleaners in South Lyon. I worked at a dry cleaners in No- in Northville. So I really, when I approved that budget and approved that contract for the cleaning of the uniforms, I really did not know, because I worked in Northville, that it was the local dry cleaner here in South Lyon, that is my affiliate, um, that was actually doing the cleaning. So you, you do have a conflict of interest when your employer is involved in, in what you do for a living. But if I'm working in a different location and I don't have knowledge of, of the conflict of interest, then I don't see how you could hold somebody accountable for, for having a conflict of interest when they didn't even know. This is not the case. Th- this is a case where someone who is very seasoned- Th, this is a case where someone who is very seasoned and very sophisticated in conflicts of interest, for whatever reason, didn't disclose it for four months. And I don't understand why, because I don't buy the argument, you know, it was a mishap. I, I just don't believe it. Maybe if it was somebody new on council, maybe if it was somebody who didn't have the experience in raising conflicts of interest in the past, maybe I could buy into that a little bit. But I can't, and this is very serious. This is extremely serious.
Okay, does anybody else have anything?
I do.
Nothing good.
I do. I just want to go all the way back to the very beginning. About 40 minutes ago, we discussed the letter. So I'd like to get back to the tone of the letter that originally went out regarding, actually, council member Kurtzwell. That particular letter, when I read through it, and I read legal documents every single day, there, there was no, in my opinion, there was no accusatory tones toward anyone. And then the second letter that went out was practically identical in the same tone. It was legal, it was professional, it was direct, there was no accusations, there was no quote-unquote witch hunt. And I think when we talk about being professional, we have to think about all aspects of our life. You can't be professional in front of everyone and then not be professional behind the scenes. If you're going to be professional, you, your reputation is built every single day. And every single day, whatever you do is either going to make it better or make it worse. And everyone sees that. So if you put on a great front for the TV video and everyone sees how professional you are, just keep in mind, behind the scenes, the rest of us also see how unprofessional you can be. I'm not naming any names, I'm just saying in general, that there's particular emails that go out, and it's not all sunshine and roses. It's actually very, I mean, it's, it's terrible how we talk to one another. But in regards to that letter, both of those letters, in regards to Councilman Kivell and Councilmember Kurtzwell, nothing was accusatory. In my opinion, after reading legal documents, the tone was very direct and very professional. So that's just my say on this.
John, I don't, I don't know if I was reading two different letters, but that's okay. But to recap the situation, we received an email from Tim, and Tim admits, and I'll, I'll read this again, "His failure to disclose his employment relationship with a bidder for contracts with the city and voting to improve them was improper and contrary to the city's code of ethics." Okay, it's that simple. You want to say, oh, it's no big deal, no big deal, you're blowing too much? Our own city attorney, who everybody else on this, some people are praising, is such a great legal expert, is admitting that this is improper and contrary to the city's code of ethics. And we're not talking about a few thousand dollars, we're talking about $42,000, okay? That's, that's, that's a lot of man-hours. I mean, think about, when you buy, when you buy a window, I'm in purchasing, most of it is material and labor, and you have some overhead. You got to, you know, heat the building and everything, but a large portion is the labor itself that goes into it. That's probably, I, I don't want to put a number on it, I'm in the windows business, but it's probably 30% of the overall cost. I mean, that's a huge bill to get. I mean, 30% of 42,000, that's pretty, that's pretty big. So earlier I mentioned, and I'll make this brief, because I know everybody's getting tired, but I mentioned the bias, okay? Now, I do want to ask, did Phil Waipert ever turn in the revised insurance?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Well, I could spend 30 minutes talking about how Attorney Wilhelm berated me for the South Lyon Mattcats not having the proper insurance, but yet Phil Waipert comes up here and he has no issues and it's not a problem. So I'm just setting the stage, okay? So maybe it's that, maybe it's because I didn't vote for his 61% increase in raise, 61%.
Is this about the city attorney? What are we talking about? This is about Glenn.
No, you're off topic.
You are totally off topic.
You're out of line. You voted for the raise as what, 61%?
What are you talking about?
We'll talk about that, we'll talk about-
Are we talking about Glenn? Are we talking about the city attorney?
We're talking about the treatment, and how this is not fair treatment and how council members-
It's not on the agenda, it's Glenn we're talking about.
This is all part of the conflict of interest discussion.
No, this is a part about what you two want to talk about.
Kramer, take a deep breath, please.
Oh, Mike, Mike, you're not well. Mike, you, you haven't been well in months.
Count to 10, please.
Okay.
So, certain members on council-
You really mean well.
-voted for a 61% raise, and when I mention this raise of 61%, I'm always brushed off as, oh, those are fake numbers. That's not true. But I have an email that admits from Councilmember Kivell that it is a 60, originally 65% when Tim was increasing it 84, was requesting 84%, and we settled on a 61% based on your recommendation.
I prepared that committee.
I was, and I was against it.
I was not on that committee.
And I voted against it.
I was not on that committee.
You made the recommendation to your buddy Glenn. That's what happened.
What are you talking about? Joe, what are you talking about?
I don't know what you're talking about.
What are you talking about, Joe?
I'm talking about the people-
I was not on that committee and I never made any recommendations. What are you talking about?
You made the proposal. We-
No, Joe, this is about, this is about the election, isn't it? You've already said it in the emails and Facebook. You are trying to set an agenda for the election.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I agree.
I'm out.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys are unbelievable. Put Joe on record.